Alright, everybody. It is eight thirty and today is Saturday, January twenty seventh. We're here for the second day of the winter review of the Capella City Council. We do have a call on present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. Item number two on our agenda is citizens' appearance. Did we have anybody signed up to speak? We will skip on to our main items on the agenda, which is number three. Primarily, we're going to be talking about budget and modeling and debt so forth, so.
Good. Mr. Pennington. By the way, good morning, council. Let me just offer an observation, another observation. Most of the time that when I do these for cities, that never happens with private sector stuff, but with cities, it's there's typically citizens that show up. First off, they don't show up two days in a row, so the fact that you've got citizens to do that and the fact that you've got citizens that come here just to learn and be a part and to watch what's happening. You know, typically you get citizens that they come, they have an agenda. They're, you know, they're trying to pull some strings or they're, you know, they're about to campaign or whatever that might be. One of the things I've always learned about, I've always enjoyed about your city, though.
By the way, that's what it is.
But people coming on and, and, you know, even people who just show up to learn here. And I think that's a good sign for Capella and John, you know, we'll miss you, John.
Thank you.
So, so anyways, let's jump into the agenda. This is the, this is the best part of the session because now we talk a little bit about strategy and I want you to think of it this way. Strategy is how we, how we win. It is our approach to determining how we win in the marketplace we serve. That's the strategy. And so we're going to have that and let's jump right into it with we'll start with debt modeling and then we'll look for other considerations and what have you, but the debt modeling piece gets us into that conversation some of you wanted to have about future and funding and what do we do and how do we do it? So let's start with the data and we'll go for Mary.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I know some of you remember when I was working on water sewer and how I loved talking about that. But I love talking about strategy and so really excited to be here this morning to talk to you about some of the trends we're seeing and some of the strategies that we've come up with to address those trends. So before we start talking about the debt modeling, I do want to provide you I'm going to provide you with some, some background and some history before we get started. First, if you recall, some of you may recall, back in April of twenty twenty-two, council approved a reimbursement resolution for the future bond issue. Included in that resolution were three projects. Those projects were Royal Lane, a fire station, and the service center. Thank you. So the bond issue related to those projects would be funded from the property tax rate specifically from the INS portion of the property tax rate. And the total of those three projects is estimated to be a cost of about forty-eight million. And the reimbursement resolution also included some water sewer projects. And those projects are village pathway rehabilitation and the water redundancy project. And the portion of bonds issued for that is about five million dollars. And if you recall, when we were going through the water sewer rate study back in November, December, we built into the rate structure the issuance of these bonds. And so those bonds, that portion of the bond issue would be paid from water and sewer rates. So now that you have a background, I do want to move to talking about the bond issue and debts. And so based on our understanding of council's policy that you want to keep the INS portion of the tax rate flat, we developed some strategies around how to do that by working with Jason Hughes with Pilltop Securities. He's our financial advisor. And so what Jason did is he created a model that we use some fund balance to fund, so we pay a portion of the projects with fund balance. And then it's also how we structure the debt. So what came from Jason's analysis is that we would use about twelve point five million dollars of fund balance. So of the forty-eight million, twelve point five would come from fund balance and the remainder would be what we would issue bonds for. And so since we're talking about fund balance, I thought this would be a good time to just take you through the general fund fund that you got forward. It was sent out to you last night electronically for those that like it electronically and you handed it out because you want to take notes. So I'm just going to start at the beginning here. So our beginning fund balance at the end of nine thirty of twenty-three. So our recent fiscal year end and it's unaudited. The auditors will be bringing for the results of the audit at the end of February. So we have about a hundred and forty-four point seven million dollars in fund balance. And then if you take what we budgeted for revenues for fiscal year twenty-four of about sixty-nine point five. And then you reduce that by the budgeted expenditures. And the budgeted expenditures have been adjusted for the encumbrance carryovers. And as a reminder, the encumbrance carryovers are the POs that are still open at the end of September, September twenty-three. We bring those POs over into the new fiscal year twenty-four and we also bring that budget over. So the fiscal year twenty-three budget gets reduced and the fiscal year twenty-four budget gets increased. And if you recall, that expenditure number does include some windcon costs related to fully funding the capital replacement fund and the enterprise solutions replacement fund. And again, that was a strategy to, those replacement funds were the capital replacement fund was established back in twenty fifteen as a strategy to help keep the property tax rate from having those high increases and decreases, particularly when we need to replace fire engines. And so that was one of the reasons that that was created. And so if you come down, we just have some placeholders for the fiscal year twenty, twenty-five budget. The projected ending fund balance for fiscal year twenty-four is a hundred and thirty-four point eight million. So then we get into how we, how we allocate that fund balance. So charter requires us to reserve ten percent of the budgeted operating or the budgeted expenditures. And that's required by charter and it's non-spendable. And so what we did is we took ten percent of the operating, so we reduced the seventy, the seventy-nine million that I showed you first. We reduced that by those replacement transfers to the replacement fund to come up with what our operating expenditures are. And so the seven point two represents ten percent of operating. The next area that's committed, and those really are council policies. So that this is, these are, this area is what council has said, we want to set fund balance aside for this. And the first is fifteen percent, so it's calculated the same way as the ten percent, only it's fifteen percent. And then the next three areas are allocated for economic development, for revenue threats, and then for projects. We'll be talking more about that in March. So after the audit is done, we know exactly where we land as far as revenues over expenditures, we come to you with your policy and we'll have a further discussion on do we need to make any adjustments to those numbers? And then the next area is really assigned, and this is where our strategies come in. So the first, the first one is the CRDC maintenance. And historically, we have transferred thirty-five percent of the CRDC sales tax after debt to the general fund. However, we stopped doing that in fiscal year twenty-three budget and we did not do it in fiscal year twenty-four. And that was just one of the ways that we could try and preserve the CRDC fund to be able to do some of the things that they're doing. So you're going to see that number come down as we utilize that. We reduce that by portions of the operations for culture, the community experience department for like the core and wagon wheel things that we pay for for them. So we can reduce that as we go through the years. The next, if you recall during the budget process, we know that we're potentially going to, we're going to go out for bid for the refuge contract and so the hiring of a consultant to help us with that. We pulled it out of fiscal year twenty-four budget because they weren't ready, but we know that we're going to need to do that, so we set that, that money aside. And then you have about three hundred and twenty-five thousand, which is for your building code and zoning update. And those, that's a project that community development has ID. Not sure what year we're going to do it in, but we know we need to do it, so we set aside money. And then the economic development programs, that's something that was set back, back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And we've slowly been using that as items have been brought forward to you for economic development projects. We, we have been using that money. And then we have another strategy that, that we have developed and again, this is based on what we're seeing as trends. And so if you recall back in March when we brought the five-year forecast to you, we talked about it was an internal document that we use to, to see trends and then to come up with strategies around those trends that we were seeing. So we can be doing things today to help reduce the impact of the trends that we're seeing. And so this is a strategy and I'm going to give a little bit more on that in a moment, but we'll kind of keep walking through the fund balance. So then trail projects, again, we know that there's some trail projects out there that need to be done. We know that CRDCs potentially if the rule goes into effect, there'll be some constraints on, on that fund regarding revenue. Sales tax is the only revenue source for that fund. So putting a little bit of money set aside in fund balance for trail projects. The dark project, that's the silver line. We've had this in there for a while for anything that the city, cities portion of that project. And then the next portion is the twelve point five million that I just mentioned to you for the issuance of the bonds. And then the next area is the twenty-four forty council initiative. So one thing that we really realized is we have this twenty forty plan, but do we have funding for it? So this is, this is really a, a mine item, a, a resource for council to be thinking about what do we want to do regarding twenty forty and knowing that we do have some funds set aside for that. And then the last category is strategic reserve and that's twelve million. And that, that really is if the rule goes into effect, we're going to have to make changes, right? If it goes into effect. And so this is, it's that buffer that gives us an opportunity to ease into those changes. And so that kind of rounds out your, your assigned fund balance. Do you have any questions on these?
Jim, go ahead, man. Excuse me. I needed, I wasn't, one thing you said I didn't follow. You said, and you were talking about the CRDC rule change. Now, were you talking about? I didn't, I didn't follow that line.
Are you, the CRDC maintenance?
No, it was, it was, you were up at the top, it was the CRDC maintenance item, but you said the rule change.
So because CRDC receives sales tax, we stopped transferring, receive sales tax and we know that we have the potential for the rule to change?
So you were talking about three point three three four?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was all I, that's all right. Jim?
Thank you. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning.
So a couple of questions. With respect to these assigned funds or even the committed funds, like for example, economic development, we've committed those, the, the six hundred thousand plus. But whether we've spent it or not remains to be seen, right?
It has not been spent yet, so that's sitting there.
But we don't, we don't have distinct economic development allowances, projects, inducements that, that resulted in that six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. So that's a projection?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's something that, that we, if there's an opportunity for an economic development agreement that we want to dip into this to fund that, that would be what you need to do.
Okay. And likewise on the revenue threats, if they don't materialize as severely as we might think or whatever, the one point five million would, would be allocated but not stem, some portion of it.
Correct.
Let me just interrupt though. Revenue threats, you have to think about them. So this council probably hadn't talked about this in a while. The comptroller always has the ability to do an audit of any local business. If the sales tax has been allocated incorrectly because of zip code, let's just say it was supposed to go to Dallas or it was supposed to go to Irving instead of Capella. This has historically been the area of revenue threats where the comptroller gives options or gives the amount of sales tax that you, they repay. Or you can't, because it comes from the city, it doesn't come from the businesses. Or we can use this line item as a way to, let's say it's three hundred dollar, three hundred thousand dollars that we should not have received. We could go to this line item and just cut a check to the comptroller and be done with it.
Sure, but that, that may or may not happen, so.
That's correct. Philosophically, though, that's what I'm saying, the council has set that line item up.
Oh, right, right, right.
Right.
So I guess my, my ultimate question is having confirmed all that understanding is so let's say that on the economic development, we, we ended up with only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in inducements over the course of fiscal year and the revenue threat just doesn't materialize. Do we carry that those funds forward on these committed accounts for the next fiscal year? And then just decide how much more we want to add?
Yes. So I mean, the, this, your fund balance is how much you have available at the end of the year, right? So it's your, it's cumulative over all years of your revenues minus your expenditures. And so we're, we said it there, so it keeps going. How you allocate it is what it changes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, just one more quick thing. Sorry. These categories came up, Mayor, was this about two thousand and fourteen?
Yes.
These categories the council created because at the time there was a pretty good chunk of positive revenue over expenses. And the council said, well, let's come up with some guideline about how we like to divide up that additional revenue going forward. So these numbers have actually been pretty static. You know, in terms of because the, the unreserved, undesigned has continued to grow. So they haven't been, oh, okay, well, we said we're going to split twenty-five percent in that and we were going to do, we just, council decided that.
Sure, okay. For the last full fiscal year, do we know, or you may not have calculated this, I'm not putting you on the spot, but what I mean to this. Do we know what the difference would be in terms of the, the available sales tax to the city if three point three three four becomes final law as opposed to the, we win the lawsuit and we're back to the standard tax regime?
So what I can tell you is what we budgeted versus what we have collected for interest in the general fund. So we budgeted a little over thirteen million and collected about three million in the general fund.
Okay.
Okay, so it's about a ten million dollar difference.
And the thirteen million reflected in effort to calculate sales tax revenue based upon the new regime if it becomes law.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Don?
Don had raised hand.
Just going one step further, oh, the, the difference in the allocated and the assigned is the allocated just that somewhere council along the way committed those funds, whereas assigned is staff has just done that? Is that essentially what it is? It's sort of the same?
Well, committed is definitely council's policies.
Okay.
Assigned are where we bring in reinforced strategies on how are we going to change some of the things?
Just sort of earmark some of those other funds as possible. So when I look at economic development program, one hundred and thirty-five, it's been assigned versus the six hundred and sixty-six, it's really for the same purpose. Is that correct?
I would, yeah, they're both economic development. One is something council said we want to set this target here in case there's something.
Yep.
And then the other was, I believe, and it was before my time, I was trying to find if there was details of what that was put there for. I could find the dollar amount that it was coming down, but I couldn't find what it was specifically created for.
There was a million dollars or something once upon a time that was put into Odebo, wasn't there? That was spent, that was supposed to be spent down.
That was the six hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Oh, was it?
It was over.
Um, those allocated numbers, twenty-five percent, thirty-five percent, twenty-five percent, what are those percentages? Is that?
Those are percentages that council came up with that's in your policy.
But they're twenty-five percent of what?
Of the amount of excess revenues over expenditures for the year.
So at the end of the audit in February, you'll get to see whatever that number is. That's why I'm saying the council has not chosen to continue to do that.
They haven't updated, they haven't.
Those numbers generally haven't changed since, like I said, two thousand and fourteen or whatever.
So we have a million dollar excess at the end of the year, twenty-five percent of it?
Could go if you tell us that.
Correct.
Do those numbers change from year to year?
As far as the amount of revenues over expenditure, but in terms of what these numbers here are, they haven't changed. The, the unassigned, you remember it was even bigger, but the unassigned, unreserved, undesigned number just kept growing.
And, and I haven't talked about that number in our, in our strategy around that number. So what we did with unassigned is that, that number represents fifty percent of your budgeted expenditures, operating expenditures. And so that's about a hundred and eighty days, right? And talking with Jason and others, that is about the level that we believe it needs to be to maintain our AAA rating as far as the fund balance portion of that rating.
So these twenty forty council initiatives, that's just earmarked, those are not spoken, I mean, they're not, they're not, it's just make funds available for whatever we want to spend it on for twenty forty. That's what you got it earmarked for, right?
Yes.
And then the CRDC maintenance, go back to, that's just money set aside in case CRDC needs it?
No. So that was as part of the
Initial.
Right, the initial.
When it was created back in the late two thousand.
Thank you.
Basically what happened was because it had a timeframe on it, there was no assurance at all that the city council and or the community would continue to support that particular sales tax. So the idea, much like we talked about a buffer, the idea was they started transferring into the CRDC maintenance account. It's been there for, it was there before I got here. And it was built up, it was about twelve billion or so, if not more at the time. And then once the vote was taken, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, which then shot it out to another twenty-plus years or whatever, the decision was made, well, that fund is not necessary now in terms of the way it's grown. So therefore that's when they started using it to offset the CRDC transfers, does transferring over to the CRDC general fund, it's already here. So we started using that fund for that purpose.
So what would have been thirty-five percent CRDC sales tax coming to general fund now basically comes out of this fund?
It's what, I don't even think they use, they don't even use that much. They do an allocation based on.
We, it's an allocation based on what are the expenses, what, what expenditures did the core incur, the wagon wheel? And then what happens is it reduces that and it flows down into undesigned it or, you know, can be used for another strategy. Okay, so that it's not, it, it's just a bucket that we set aside and that we can reduce it each year and then that frees it up for something else.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Mark?
Jim, historically, have we ever seen any revenue threats approach one point five million?
We, we did have on, we had a vendor or a business that paid us and we, they were not located in Capella and we could not figure out. And it was Mike, I think it was, it was close to one point five, one point four.
Seven H P?
Yes. And so for four years, we, we knew that there was a risk of an audit. And so that four years went away, so we're good on that, but we don't know if another one will come up. So we did, we, we were aware of one and we could not confirm. And we kept track and it was up, I believe last year was the last year.
It was.
Short for that one.
So guess what? That went into the unreserved, undesigned number. In terms of the, the drop from up there then.
Thank you. Mr.? Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Kim, you mentioned about we budgeted thirty million dollars for the sales tax, we collected twenty-three million and ten million remaining, keeping in a budget and bucket. We've been doing that for a couple of years. What's the balance in that bucket now?
Well, it's a combination. It is the capital reserve. You're asking in total how much? I don't know.
I mean, ten million this year, one million last year.
Yeah, I was going to say about thirty million.
Yeah.
And that's why your unreserved, undesigned, you kept growing so much.
And what percentage amount we take it from that buckets to use it for other purposes?
We, we, we have designated for capital reserves for the capital replacement fund. We have designated for the technology and those are the two main ones. We're looking at the IMF. So when you ask this question about have we spent? I don't even know, have we even started spending out of the capital replacement fund yet?
And all the, all the purchases that we made were just taken out of there. And so the, the way it's working historically, before you fully funded the capital replacement fund, when we would bring forth, forth a budget that had a fire truck in it, say, we would need to pay for the fire truck out of the year that we were purchasing it, out of the general fund. So two million dollars plus one tenth of that two million. Because what we would then need to do is we pay for the truck and we pay for one year of use of life into the capital replacement fund. So that when ten years later, so every year we're doing that. So ten years later, we then can buy it out of the capital replacement fund. So this is a strategy by fully funding those replacement funds, you have taken I don't, burden's not the right, but you have, you've relieved the general fund from needing to pay two million dollars in one year. You've ju, you've used your, the excess sales tax that we've been receiving over the, the rule. You've used that to create a strategy to help the taxpayers. Because now we don't have to go to them and say, we need to buy a two million dollar truck. This is going to impact property taxes.
We already have the capital reserve fund before we have the sales tax bucket we've been keeping aside.
But it was not fully funded.
Correct. That's what I'm asking. So we've been using some amount, right? Or that's a percentage I was looking?
We, no, I would say maybe a little bit out of there, but what we've been doing is paying for it. And then because the, the replacement fund started in twenty fifteen. And so if you have a ten-year life on a vehicle, it's going to be twenty twenty-five before that's fully funded. Okay? So and a, and a fire truck, I can't remember the last time, but when we bought it, a fire truck is a ten to fifteen-year life. So that's not going to be fully funded and paid out of the capital replacement fund until ten to fifteen years later. So we, we bought those fire trucks in twenty seventeen, I believe. So it's later, that, or it wasn't, it was
The ambulances.
The ambulances. Yeah, that's what it was. And we bought and so it's.
Yeah, I'll talk to you later about this. I have some more clarification. Twenty forty council initiatives, where is that eleven million coming from? What bucket?
So I would say that that is the revenue that we've been collecting in sales tax.
Again, from the sales tax.
Over what we've been budgeted because we've been living as, as the sales tax rule is in effect. But we adjusted that in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty with COVID to say if the sales tax rule goes into effect, we need to adjust. And so we've been living as if the rule is in effect.
That's where the eleven million is coming from or allocating to?
Yeah, that's, I, I will tell you, that's where the twenty, the twenty-eight million, the twelve trail projects, the bond project, the initiatives and the strategic reserve are all from the excess sales.
Okay.
So does that help you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I'm just trying to understand the question. So that's where that all shows up. So if you, if you start adding that, all that gives you a nine.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we budgeted O and M expenses based on property tax and sales tax. When we had the differential on fully funding the capital or fully funding the technology, we showed you what that was and we transported it out. So those dollars are in a different place that you don't even see in the fund balance.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
Uh, Kim, thank you so much for coming to speak into us today. I do have a question about the unassigned, unreserved, undesigned funding. I appreciate you speaking on a little bit earlier because I was going to bring this up. When you guys are developing a strategy for the fifty percent reserve. When you guys are developing a strategy for the the fifty percent reserve, to preserve the triple A bond rating that we have, is there a particular strategy as why that money is kept in the unassigned, unreserved, undesignedated? Versus us as a council adopting a policy, maybe for committed funds to pres- to preserving that triple A? Like, let's say that we pay, you know, I know it, I know after the audit and stuff, that number can fluctuate a little bit, but fifty percent of our budgeted expenditures. Is there a reason why we don't have those funds specifically designated as like triple A preservation? Like versus having it being unassigned, unreserved, undesignedated?
You go first, we'll see how you answer that question.
So.
Can I answer?
Yes.
If I remember correctly, if you assigned the the funds to a, even if you called it the triple A reserve contingency fund, then they consider that to be committed and it's not unassigned, it's not available for use. And what they're looking for is funds that are available for any use to cover any contingency.
Exactly, if that contingency is triple A?
Yes.
Yes.
We've had that.
Why?
Well, that would ask, their natural question would be, they would look at us and say, what does that mean?
Yeah.
I mean, in terms of what, what do you, or the restrictions, yeah, what it, soon as you assign it something. Okay, so that's for triple A purposes, what are you gonna do?
You know, one of the.
I mean, that, that's how that, that's how they work.
It might be time to have Jason come back in and give us a discussion on how you come up with that number. And it's not a solid number, there's no rule that says to be triple A rated, you have to have X percent of your capital sitting, setting aside free. It's a very subjective number.
That's what he's gonna tell you.
Oh, and I remember him coming and speaking before, I guess I just never really understood why it has to be here. Because I know, I know that you know, and I know that you know, but what happens when you guys aren't here? And then there's some random council here that doesn't know that.
Well, I think the undesignedated, it's really the health of your city, right? You have, you have this money sitting here and it shows that you are a healthy city and if something does happen, you have the resources to take care of it. So it's, it's telling how healthy your city is and there's never a leaving.
There's never a leaving. I just, I I don't know, just, that is, everything in this city is designated and labeled and stuff like that. So I guess that's the one part.
The label.
You know, I haven't, you know, it's just triple A, like on the side there. I don't know, I just, I I just find that bizarre, but no, I I appreciate you answering the question. I think it's important that everybody understands, you know, what that fund balance is, that undesignedated balance is for. Thank you for answering my question.
Just real quick to, not to belabor the point, but knowing the schedule, and she'll talk a little bit to explain here, but knowing the schedule, we will have gone through the lawsuit. But one way or the other, I don't know that the ruling will have come down yet, we will have gone through the lawsuit. Based on the last time we issued that, one of the things that movies and S and P said afterwards, because they rewrite each year, is that everything that the city of Capel said they were going to do, we've done. As it relates to, because this is a risk and, you know, they're risk averse, right, in terms of what's going on. So the undesignedated, unreserved, on top of everything else, weirdly for Capel, they act, that they look to that because of the volatility of sales tax first and second, because they know of the lawsuit. So when we went to, we at least had a target of fifty percent. Before, you didn't even have, if some of you remember this discussion, you didn't even have a guide for what that number should be, right? It was just sliding all over the place. And and so this way, at least, we have an internal guide that we can look to and say, hey, council from a policy standpoint, supports this number being a fifty percent, which then means there's a lot of slide above the line. Right? Jim? John?
No.
No, I've got you and then Randy and then John.
You're gonna go to John.
We're not, I'm doing four, I think it's you.
Okay, mine's actually a quick question, thank you, Kim. On the, I want to go back to the economic development. So I know we have the allocated twenty five percent, which is council driven, right, that number. But then we have an economic development program on the assigned. Is that number, did that come up because we didn't think twenty five percent was enough?
And I, I don't know. Okay, I went back into Jennifer Miller's files and I could find when it was set up, it was two hundred fifty thousand initially, back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, but I couldn't find if it was for something specific. And and I could see that we're, it's been drawn down and it's been part of some budget amendments. But I couldn't find specific projects that it's been used for, so I'm just gonna reach out to her and see if she'll, she'll recall.
Maybe, yeah, okay, I was just curious, I guess for me, I was thinking of like, did we not think twenty five percent was enough? And that was something we could, that's council driven, so, okay, thank you.
So I can give a little insight on that. Those numbers were very subjective and we decided to pick a number and it literally came down to picking what we thought was best and to see how it would work.
Okay.
And there was no, there was no magic behind the numbers, it was just, let's, we knew that we wanted to put those funds aside. And so we picked something that seemed reasonable. And we did, for not, for several years after that, we did review the percentages and they seemed to be working within the parameters that we desired. So we just left them alone.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay, um, Jim?
Okay, thank you. So thanks for your advice, patience, I do have a working knowledge of the carry forward method you've been describing, right? But for example, with respect to fire station five, okay? Do we start making those installments, so to speak, when the decision's made to build it? Knowing that we're gonna have an extra fire truck and ambulance that we don't currently, that we're not replacing, it's a brand new set of wheels? Or do we go ahead and, is that the one time that we take the hit on the capital account? And just buy the fire truck and the ambulance rides? And then start the carry forward, so that ten to fifteen years down on their, on their product line, we we then have the cash to pay without taking a hit on our capital balance?
Okay, so before you dive into that answer, for clarification, there's been no commitment to a new fire truck or new ambulance in fire station five? Well, for the premise example, I don't want, hey, there's this expectation, while Kevin and his team are still working through, that someone had to do real estate. So that's, ah, okay, so that's number one. Number two, in the, if I'm right, in the IMF and facility projects, correct, to correct me if I'm wrong, that's where some of the, we've been, we've been sending out reimbursement resolution, had it for five hundred ninety thousand, like that. So on the twenty four bond projects at twelve point five, which you mentioned forty eight million or whatever, right? The twelve point five is basically paying cash either for the fire station or for the service center. Okay, that, I mean, that's the recommendation strategy wise. And and so on a capital project, Kim, typically, we would set aside the full amount of the project. We wouldn't necessarily be increment. So on facility projects, I get, you you look for those?
Yeah, we do. And I was like, there's, there's. Because that is a strategy that that we developed, but that the capital replacement fund only has in it, we fully funded existing, the replacement of existing vehicles and engineering equipment, right? So existing fire trucks, we fully funded the replacement of those.
So, um, now just speaking conceptually at this point, obviously. So if, if we end up just relocating the fire truck to the new fire station and it would already be within the carry forward process and it wouldn't be a hickey at all, if we ended up buying a new fire truck, that's completely different. And that we would just look at as a capital expenditure?
Yeah, but traditionally, that's what she was saying, you you budgeted in that one year, so there'd be that spike that we're trying to avoid.
Right, well, sometimes it's not.
It's possible.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to understand, thank you. Okay, Jim?
I'm just trying to, I think you said that, oh, you said that the unassigned, that's something that's too much work to maintain the triple A rating. And was that?
It's, it is what we believe the fund balance needs to maintain the triple A rating from a fund balance perspective. There are many things that they look at, I mean, what they're looking at for triple A rating.
Right, so, and then I think you also mentioned that the other, I guess, you're talking about the IMF, another thing that's showing power, the initial sales tax that we were here, right, through the, so. In fact, you know, I'm not saying, I'm pretty much, you know, I'm not, and that's everyone. And we had, Ken?
Can you re-ask the question? Oh, no, it's, when I say lower, they were at thirty four million. I I mean, you know, in terms of, for whatever reasons, Kim, you have more history to tie to on this. But whatever reason, that number's been in the mid thirties and grew, you know, as the sales tax number was growing. That's when we said, look, we can't keep growing unassigned, right? Because of some of the challenges that creates. So it's been hovering in this arena for a while, but.
It's in the thirty four, I mean, then the thirty four plus, you know, that range for several years. But it's sort of like.
Ten years ago or eight years ago, it was in the twenty six, twenty eight million. I mean, it's been, we, we had talked about whether we needed to, the question came about, what does that need to be to support the triple A? And that was where the discussion with Jason came from, because at one point, we were talking about, well, is twenty enough? Is twenty one million enough? And the answer was probably not. And so we just got into a discussion and in terms analogy of a hundred, sorry, using Kim's analogy of a hundred and eighty days of operating capital seem to be logical and make good sense. And it also supports the water and sewer, water and sewer fund, which has a hundred and eighty days of of reserve. So at least we're being consistent from a policy standpoint.
And and one of the things we always laugh about, because Jason was the one that threw out the first number. I mean, also to the council, Jason said, well, you know, I don't know, thirty four, thirty six, whatever, that, whatever that number was at the time, Jason kind of said, well, that's a good number. And all of a sudden, that became, without any.
Cards.
Yeah, without any application of, well, this many days or anything along those lines. So now we at least have this guide, you know, as long as council continues to want to use that, okay, fifty percent of operating.
Okay. And we can, so just how that would, what would be the highest potential?
I would say by using a percentage of budgeted operating expenditures, that is, that number, whatever that calculates out to be is going to be your number. And so by using expenditures and a percentage of that, I think that's a solid, so it's gonna fluctuate based on your budget, right? So your budget goes up, that number's gonna go up to support, to support your operations.
Yeah, just, just to add to, I think one of the things that Jason points out is, you know, most cities have a charter requirement, which we do. For the city to have the additional fifteen percent, that's, that's more of an anomaly. It's not, I'm not gonna say it's not standard, but by you adding another fifteen percent on top of what the charter requirement is, you go within an additional bucket. So, so you have fifteen percent up there at ten and then you have undesignedated fifty percent. You can see from a conservative standpoint, you have a lot of flexibility, which is part of what the rating agencies look at.
Mark? I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So in the, I mean, I mean, we don't see our overall budget decreasing in a year. So there's not a direct correlation between that unreserved and overall budget as a number, as a percentage.
So not, I don't, okay, so.
Well, at some point, you know, twenty four, twenty five, and you know, it's crept up and but with that, our overall budget has also increased. So it is, so we've seen that number is kind of keeping a straight percentage of the overall budget.
So back when it was in the twenty four million, that level, there was no policy around what it should be. But it was whatever it was, basically, I, there wasn't a policy around it. And we would assign things and commit things as needed, but there wasn't a real policy around it. So now a policy's been created and as expenditures fluctuate, that number's gonna fluctuate. So. Does that, did I answer your question?
If you, if your operating budget were up to eighty five million, then theoretically, you would, your fifty percent, if fifty percent is that number, that number would have to go up as well, right? So, I mean, there, if if you set that fifty percent level, then, I mean, you can choose to ignore that, obviously, but if if you want to be the most conservative, that would be, you know, tho- those two places would be connected, that would be the appropriate thing to do. Don't you say?
Exactly.
But they, whatever numbers, never had a guide, that it was just wrong. Whatever, there was no tie to a percentage of expenditure. Okay, okay.
Jim?
This is definitely one hundred percent irrelevant to what really what we're discussing. All the assigned categories, those are staffed and assigned, or we, those are not council required or anything like that, right? All the assigned categories there.
Well, I I would say, I mean, some of them are staff driven based on strategies that we're recommending.
But they're not required by a council or anything. I'm just, what I, what I was gonna ask is, when the analysts look at us, do they see, they already see us in one million? And we look at, I mean, or is that the number they look at? And they look at a number sixty million that's technically not, so somehow that's got some kind of official designation to it?
Yes, because they're, they're seeing this walk forward also.
Okay.
So they're seeing the plans that we have. And what they're looking for is, are you using your fund balance for one time uses or are you using it to support operations?
Okay, so even though they're, they're designated or assigned, whatever you want to call it, but very fluid, but we can change those at any moment.
Absolutely.
Right, so they're, they're really pretty flexible, but they still are gonna, they're not gonna consider we've got ninety million in available funds. Really, right?
Yeah, so first, understand that as we go through the budget process, when y'all have discussions and you say, well, these are things you want, we can assign them or staff strategies, but you adopt these as part of the budget process. So yes, you can change them, but it'll be an amendment to the budget to make that change happen, right? So it doesn't just arbitrarily, three months into the budget, oh, no, we're gonna do something else, right? Yeah, you can still do that, but you're gonna have to amend this.
Okay.
Because you adopt your budget.
And this is adopted as part of the budget process, right? As far as the flexibility, that's why I was saying that nothing's written stone. Between the charter number, the ten percent and the bottom unreserved, unclassified, saying fifty percent, and even that's flexible. Everything in there is what you're discussing. You could have said, we don't want to create a capital replacement fund. You could have said, we didn't want to create a technical replacement fund. You could say, you know what, on the IMF traffic, all those projects and facility projects, we want to do something different.
These, the analysts and landlords look at it, they look at that, all that middle piece, all those numbers in the middle as we have a plan for those, right?
Right, and that's what I backed it up, they told us that they liked about that, oh, it was your plan.
We had a plan.
And you actually worked the plans, no doubt.
Okay, thanks.
And the other piece is that we're not using it for continuing operations, it's not paying salaries, you know, it's, it's for those one time plus.
Thanks.
Bishu?
Okay, you're everything. So I, I just wanted to be clear, if we lose the lawsuit, it is a state to muscle. And the state wants to run it back, do we have thirty five million dollars to pay back them tomorrow?
We have the ability to pay it back, we do not believe that the state will do that, I mean, but we have no mechanism of being able to go back to do that.
But my point is, I understand was we're keeping that money in a sovereign about it and not using, that is not true.
Um. Factually, what you just said, that is correct, that was not true. I don't ever recall saying we kept it in a separate bucket.
Look, let, let me move back on, because we had this conversation last year, uh, as well. So, to say that the money is kept in a separate bucket and not used is both. Um, it is both factually true and untrue. So let me explain the fact to the true side. Uh, there's not a designation in your reserve fund that said, we've, we've spoiled this money away, so to speak. Uh, in case they ask it back, so that is, that is true, Vichy, we haven't done that. What, what you have done, though, is you have taken that money and not assumed that it was operating expense. So you've taken that money out of your operating budget. So in that regard, you have taken it out because you budgeted for the assumption that it wasn't going to happen. Um, as compared to what you could have done, is to say, it's our suspend until they tell us we can. That would have been the other option from a budget standpoint, in which case your budget would have been much richer on an operating budget standpoint. And then had, if, if you lose, now you've got to make a drastic cut quickly. So you made the drastic cut, I don't know how many years ago.
Three, four, or, that was nineteen.
Yeah, so you made that drastic cut in twenty nineteen, so that you wouldn't have to do that going forward. Now, let's say that you lose, then assuming they have no mechanism to go back. What they would tell you is, you don't have that money going forward. But that might have an impact on, is how you fund some of these other.
Well, that's why we, we, I mean, we've been really consistent, I think, in the, the communication we've had. The strategic reserve, that twelve million dollars, we've been operating at basically forty five percent, fifty five percent.
Yes.
Which one?
We reduced it fifty five, so we've been on.
We've been operating forty five percent directly on sales tax since two thousand nineteen twenty. And so, we don't know, that we've said consistently, we don't know, we are conservative and right. That we've targeted the right number in terms of the sales tax, but that's why the strategic reserve number or the set aside number is at twelve million. Because if we were wrong, we figured it's going to take two or three years for all of these companies to figure out how to, you know, where's the sales tax better going? And how's this going to work? And we'll be able to monitor the numbers as we go through. So that could, that money is for you as a council to be able to operate without having to make the drastic change. The difference from this and Round Rock, for example, Round Rock's been using their sales tax as if the, nothing's changed. They've, they've done their operations and everything on both sides, that's two different philosophies that we're taking, right? In terms of what's going on. But again, to, I think in reflection. Uh, uh, I, I have, you know, Jim will tell you this too. If, if they go back to Ottawa, let's just say they audit our companies and they say, you know, from twenty twenty, ooh, October twenty twenty? October twenty, right, okay, that's twenty one, October twenty one? Um. Then to your point. Every one of those projects, including the capital reserve and whatever, whatever that they have. We haven't, we, we haven't spent all that money. What was that, twenty eight, five, thirty two, twelve, forty four, eleven, fifty five, that was in capital reserve. And then for the technical reserve, so there's, let's just say there's over fifty million dollars that we haven't spent. If the comptroller comes in and says, yeah, you have the cash. We definitely got what they're going to do. We'll drop it.
I mean, I don't know, Jim, I don't mind you. I'm glad we listened, right, but I believe. I'm concerned on yours. I'm pretty much sure that it wasn't the S B O, who knows about, right?
Yeah, I mean, Jim, about, up to about two years ago, Jim was taking the position that, based on his conversations with the comptroller, he's. He's had more conversations than any of us. From, based on his conversation with the comptroller, the comptroller even told Jim, they wouldn't know how they would do that.
Right.
Because it's not good for us.
Right.
Even though they would probably start it best, they're kind of got the entire state, but you not have the resources to do that.
Right, and even if it was decided and it shouldn't be sure. It's highly unlikely in that, impossible for all of them to return back and have store from two, bag taxes, right?
But, that's, that's the way I, that's, that's the way we believe, that's the way the conversation should go down between the comptroller returning and our returning.
I, I, that's one, that's, that's one of the things that's like the chart.
Yeah, that would.
Okay.
That's a constant question with their returning. Even with this latest round, it's like, how, how do they do that?
I, I just thought it was, I was always in, I was in brush, right, I'm, I was at the time. Actually, if there's a, the council is collecting, to be, you know, when we go, and from that point, this is going to start not. Go back and retract, we didn't go back on the taxes that we supposedly collected. Because all, but you said, all the offices have been doing that.
Uh, no, most of them have. Ninety nine point nine percent of these, the, 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 what they've gotten. But, and, and, and so, and, and to some respect. You know, let's assume that's true. That the impact on those other cities is going to be horrendous. And the uproar they would get, not from you, you could say, okay, we have, we're not going to like it, but if we have to, we have to. But every other city around is going to go, wait a minute, you're about to bank up the city. And, you know, you're going to get, you, you more likely get a ground swell of pushback at that, at that level.
Maybe to that point, I think it's funny, if they came down to it, they just said, we have to go and fight on the bill, a little bit of, right?
But I'm, I'm not really sure, it sounds, people do not think this is the way this would go. I'm not sure that we have to, because regardless of that, the question becomes, once, once this mechanism starts. We'll be monitoring our sales tax and were we, were we too conservative, were we not conservative enough? You know, what's happening to ourselves? Right?
Sure.
I mean, that's why, I mean, if you think about it, and this is not what today's about, but if you think about it, to be able to go and say. You reduced your, uh, sales tax revenue by fifty, thirty five percent, and you're still providing pretty much the same level of service as you did before. That's kind of rocky.
Specifically authorize each item, item by item. And it just got to be, it was pretty burdensome on us, so it makes it much cleaner and easier this way.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, that's great.
And it will be brought forward in a budget amendment. So I mean, we're just, I'm just showing you that the amount has changed and then when I bring the budget amendment, it, you'll see the encumbrance carryovers in there.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
So the reason that one isn't in a separate S for the fund, it's because the real problem is quarantinatively because all new companies will not provide us with our information at this point, right?
And I'm not sure, I'm sorry, you don't understand the question? We know, so do we help? We know, you don't. We know because we get, it's confidential information, we know sales tax is coming in from every company.
Right.
Um, and we are the ones on our end that are taking roughly fifty-five percent and going over there. They're, so that's, that's the mechanism.
But it's against the rules because companies have not said.
Yes, origin, right. And so that's exactly, that's based on Kyle Kazner, who y'all have kind of heard that name before. That's based on Kyle's professional experience and we know how the companies operate because he's our, been our sales tax consultant since the late two thousands, I guess. Uh, plus he works all over the state, so he's analyzed all of our sales taxpayers. Um, as a matter of fact, some we had direct contact with to get clarification on what they're doing and he, he is the one that gave us the estimate of about fifty-five percent.
So maybe you just want to invite it and, um, then built in with the numbers, uh, into the budget, yeah.
Prior, prior to this year, I want to say, um, the unrestricted, undesignated numbers just kept getting bigger and bigger and bigger. You know, in terms of what's going, and that's when, I guess last year and this year, that's when it's about, okay, well, let's, let's assign those, to that point, let's assign those to different areas. Um, and we, so, so too, I think part of the question is, but they're really tracking them. I mean, what's happening is just being done in a way that gives y'all flexibility.
There's not a fund with a name, there's not, there's not a single fund with sales.
As a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, Jim basically said for us not to do that.
Because if you did that, then it would be clear that you had the ability to pay it. And it's better to be able to show that you've got uses designated for those funds. And, and let's say if the number comes back at, it should be fifty-seven percent instead of fifty-five. Okay, you've got, that's where that twelve million allows you to come back and go, okay, we got that. Yeah, if it comes back, it should be eighty-three versus fifty-five, okay, you might have a problem there, you'd make some money. But, you know, you, that's where you trust the fact that the experts that you hired kind of have a pretty good view of what that's supposed to be. My suspect, my, I suspect you're either about right or maybe even a little bit conservative. Unless I think what you're saying, um, by our consultants, um, saying, don't do that, makes a great deal of sense.
Yeah, although I think, I don't think it would be legal for them to claw back our funds and ignore the other twelve hundred municipalities. But that's not good for them, I mean, they're gonna do it for everybody or nobody.
Yeah, but we didn't want to be the shining example.
No, I mean, I know that's true. Not, not only that, but I think it's up to everyone's point on this to understand that some of the mechanics. Let's say that they did, you do understand this isn't going to the state. That means the state's something we had to figure out for our own companies, but they're having to figure out where it's supposed to go. Because, yeah.
We get like, you said.
And I, yeah, I think, that's the companies could actually go back four years ago and, and tell the state, tell the neighbors, yeah, where the, uh, it can't encumber a, a burden on every company. Yeah, so, right, that's the reason we believe their attorney is saying our attorney's father was a chance, but without a chance.
Yeah.
The logistics of all that become just overwhelming to think about. How would the state do that?
It would only have gone on for a year maybe, but it's gone on for too long, there's been years involved.
We're, we're gonna be fully, fully four years into it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We're four years into it now, I'm sorry, almost five. All right, anybody have any other questions?
I do. I do. Okay, very quickly, uh, the two hundred million dollars on the allocator, is there any reason those can't just become other assigned categories? I have to look back at June twenty-one and the walkthrough, it's the identical numbers, so we're not, we aren't, I, I have no issue that we set aside the numbers, but do they need to be, it looks, it seems to be extra noise, that two and a half million dollars in there.
You don't have, you don't have an opportunity during, after the audit, that's when we all have specifically as it relates to, do you want to continue this, do you want to do anything changes to it, or is it on both sides, which will then go into the twenty-five budget?
Okay, so we can address it then, one of them.
Right.
I was thinking it was twenty-five percent of excess revenues, economic development was twenty-five percent of excess revenues, and so it would change every year, but that's clearly not it, it was for one year.
It was, there was a one year period at some time, it's happened. And so as each year, now I'm paraphrasing, now, as each year at the end of the audit, the council looked at it, it's like, because they, they got what's going on, they just didn't go back and give them the opportunity.
But it's.
So you don't have to.
I was just curious if there's gonna be some cleanup. I mean, we could assign all these other things, I mean, we earmarked a lot of things, so just an idea, it's two and a half million dollars just sitting out there that doesn't ever change.
Well, I was gonna, we could comment on that, you know, when we come in with the economic development program and all our funds out, we'll hear them say it's coming out of economic development, that's where that money can come from.
Well, I'm not saying we don't, that they, can it, can it not just be an assigned category, just like everything else, or I, I guess.
Well, seriously, you could, you could, that's what I'm hearing, seriously, you could.
Same in the category, yes. We're not, we're not continuing, I guess, with this policy, it's, I don't know, it just seems like it's stuck out there for three years now and we haven't, we're not doing anything with the funds, we're not adding to the funds, we're not, I don't know, just a thought, I guess, as we plan for Phoenix, but just.
You could fly that in your, uh, twenty-seven council initiatives and like, did you opt in?
Well, I just, it, it's set, it was set up by council so long ago, I feel like it's probably got lost, council's turned over, I mean, so anyway, just an idea, we, it's just gonna have a million dollars too.
I mean, you know, if you think about it from a personal standpoint, it, um, one year you had some money left over and you said, man, I'm gonna put that aside because one of these days I'm going to Disney World. All right, and then you never went to Disney World, but in your head, it's still over there at Disney World, right? So now you can choose what to do with it, so. Okay, we can't have snorting over, so.
I do. Thank you.
John, well done, George.
Thank you. So that was, uh, you also have a handout that details out that twenty-eight point one million dollars that's for the IMF traffic and facilities, uh, projects. And so what would happen, that would be very similar to the capital replacement and enterprise solutions replacement. What we would do is transfer that twenty-eight million dollars into the IMF fund. If during the fiscal year twenty-five budget, that's the direction that you give us. And so it really is a strategy built around, we know that we have to take care of our infrastructure. And so Kent worked with, um, Public Works and our facilities and traffic, uh, areas to develop over the next five to ten years, what maintenance is gonna need to be done. And so again, this is just another strategy to relieve the current operations, um, or the current budget of the general fund and, and think long-term, not think about just this year, but what are we gonna need in the future? Um, particularly knowing the legislation changes that can happen. I mean, they've impacted property tax, they've impacted sales tax, they've also changed legislation on franchise fees as far as we used to collect for cable and telephone, and now you can only collect for one of them. So there's, they're constantly making changes that impact our revenue sources. And so developing strategies on making sure that we have something in place that's going to allow us to take care of our infrastructure. And so this, um, you'll see that the items highlighted in green are things that have already come, um, before council. So we had created this list and so when I said it, you know, it can come from, um, fund balance, this is where it came from, so that, once I bring the budget amendments forward to you in April May timeframe, that twenty-eight million will be increased because I'll be increasing the expenditure budget of the general fund by these amounts, okay? So, um, I know Kent is here to help me with any of these projects, if you have questions specifically on them. But i- it's really about a strategy on the trend that we're seeing. We know in the five year that we have maintenance that we're gonna have to do, and so getting ahead of that.
So is it fair to say that if we didn't do this to keep the INF, uh, the INS, uh, rate constant, we would probably have to issue long-term debt for that? This is just a way to avoid issuing debt?
For some of these projects, I mean, you, you know, you have your, they're pretty large projects, there, there's about eleven million for fire station, interior reconstruction, so I'm not sure that we could, you know, fund that million dollars through the property tax, the maintenance and operations, you're correct, we would need to issue bonds to do that.
So, side note from the question, um, I mean, maybe for some of you, the senior center and the other like, the general is, is that just, is, are those two locations by the chances, in the case of university SH, in the place to, I don't know whether.
Eleven of the ones, so, yeah.
Is, is that, is that, is that a part of the unit or a generator, or is that a, could be something out of the?
Well, no, uh, it depends on potential, I mean, that's, right now it's not conducive for that. But by any additional generators, it becomes a potential.
Okay, right, I was saying, the power bar, and we're going those two, far away from those two, I guess.
Yeah, right now the generators are sized basically for emergency operations and most functions, they're not for the whole building. These, if I understand, they're right, Ken.
Well, it's not for the, you know, you're the operator.
Yeah, the things within, right.
So with the potential, we're for the.
It's still a little more flexibility.
That's a, so it's a side, I mean.
Any other questions? Any questions for Ken?
I have a follow-up question to Jim.
Okay.
This, uh, John, this one's hard, but what you were talking about, you know, obviously, we saw generators. Um, has staff looked at strategically around the community, I know there's a core as a roaming center, for example, um, but like, let's say that, um, I know this facility has, has generation, but I know there's some, depending on how this facility's deployed, and whether it's a thing for the public if there is a, um, you know, emergency, so. Um, has staff looked at strategically around the community? Like, uh, let's say hypothetically, soon as someone is activated, they kind of catch this side of town, the corner is activated, wasn't it? Uh, is there any strategic look at roaming centers around the community in places like, an ice emergency where it's difficult for people to get around on the city? It's true, uh, strategic or central location.
I, I'm always smiling because if it's an ice, we've got no people on the road, um.
Well, I think all the power, really, that.
No, I know what you meant, I was just envisioning, yeah.
Well, I guess what I'm saying though is that, I mean, for this side of town, maybe the roaming centers, maybe the, 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 some of it.
Yeah, the emergency team does look at those kinds of things, improving schools, uh, churches. You know, it's, it's, it's a holistic approach, it's just not us. You know, they do look at different facilities, I have the recommendation for the generators here so that they could do that. But right now it's taken off. It, if there was a sheet, I'm not saying it's not, if there was a sheet, the senior center would have to leave it on the sheet because it couldn't accommodate it.
So I mean, there's coordination with like the, the schools to be able to.
They have those conversations, yes.
Okay.
But you don't, I, I can't actually, well, that's schools, are you gonna do?
I think it would be, I would be very interested, I would be very interested in seeing what that emergency plan in the, in the future might look like as far as like, how would the, like, like a, like a, this is number one, if we activate and we go down, I would be interested in that innovation.
Jim?
Yeah, I, I'd love to get briefed on our emergency plan at a work session sometime, I think that's a great idea. Then your generators too, during an ice storm, we'd be able to keep the building warm, so we wouldn't have so much collateral damage and frozen pipes and stuff after this, you know, so. There's that too.
Any other questions? Back to Ken.
Um, I, that is the conclusion of the discussion around debt, um, strategies, uh, and, and the fund balance. The last item I would have is the, uh, the budget calendar, is that freedom of events about?
Nice, can you, can you, I can answer? Certainly, so, we can, just one quick question, so, um, so if I'm understanding correctly, so, um, you assigned, um, twenty-eight million in this five years, so if we improve, like, this, that's gonna be included in the budget. So if we improve the budget approval list of projects over the next five years, those songs, I just wanted to make sure that's very clear, understood there.
Yes.
Okay, cool.
But, but you need to add one more there, though, you're not, it's totally, you're not, it totally broke on those projects. Just, we just got, yeah, staff is not going out running, you know, taking with this as the approval, so. Straight on the first item, so, you know, straight off, kind of, for you, because this is all part of the, you know, I do forecasting, it's like, maybe we go and we will build. Because for capacity, I mean, you know, there's, that's staff capacity for us to even be able to move forward to those.
The normal process, if it's over fifty thousand, it's gonna come to you.
And, and maybe it would be designated as like, you know, the financials of being, IMF traffic and facility projects, wine oil, you know, in our, in our fund balance.
Well, so what would happen?
Or, or, especially the IMF.
We would, as part of the fiscal year twenty-five, we would bring forward to you a transfer out of the general fund for twenty-eight million into the IMF.
Yeah, okay.
So then the money would be sitting in IMF and they would do their normal process and bring forward the projects and, you know, the, the awards that they're wanting to do for you to approve. So you still get final approval on, is this still project we want to do, is this still what we're doing? It just goes it from general fund into the infrastructure maintenance fund, so that you have, um, that funded for those projects.
Exactly. So, and, and, and remember, even if you approve it as part of the budget, like she said, it's gonna come back, especially building projects are gonna come back in multiple stages because you have to approve the, the design, you have to approve the, um, the engineering, then you approve the actual construction. So you have multiple levels after it goes into the budget to make the decision whether to proceed forward. So it's, just because it is part of the budget does not mean it actually has to happen, you know?
Mike? Yeah, I was just gonna say, before she moves on and talks about the budget calendar, the debt calendar is, is, you don't have to kind of talk about that, did you, George?
Yes, so, um, if you decide, um, we're moving forward with the budget issue, um, it will come to council on May fourteenth for council to approve the publication of a notice of intent. Um, and then we'll run that for two Saturdays, so it will be ran on the May eighteenth and then, um, again, May twenty-fifth in our, um, in our newspaper. Uh, and then the, the sale, uh, would happen, council would, uh, pass some ordinance authorizing the issuance of the bonds on July ninth. And then the actual closing would happen on August eighth, and that timing is all around. We need to have those issued and sold so that we can incorporate that, the repayment of principal and interest in fiscal year twenty-five into the, um, INS tax rate. You're looking, you have a question?
Oh, I'm just, we know, okay, I must have slipped somewhere, what, how, how big is the bond issued?
So, if forty-eight million is needed and we would be twelve and, yeah, that's twelve and a half, so the remainder.
Okay.
So it would be, we, we.
And we would issue all the ones, but we would still, only draw on that one as needed.
So the, the money goes into the project fund?
Okay.
And then, yes, it sits there, it's earning interest, and as we do the projects, we're paying out.
Okay, so we will only issue those that we need and we'll issue them up front?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, excellent. I was, well, you said the debt service is all been massaged, so it keeps us tax rate.
So your current tax rate is a little over seven, seven cents?
Yeah.
And so we are structuring the debt in the use of the fund balance to keep the INS tax rate at seven percent. Of course, you know, the seesaw effect, right? So as values go up, that same, this, that same amount could be a lower tax rate. But if values come down, it could be a higher tax rate.
That's gonna be forty.
If we need seven million, it's seven million.
Yeah, yeah, it's eleven, basically.
Yes. Then, um, I was just gonna go over the, the, uh, budget calendar with you, we have this also. Um, we've kicked off, um, the budget will kick off on February fifteenth. Um, and then I highlighted some dates that are really important to council, um, and that's April fourth will be the town hall meeting. Um, and then we'll be presenting the five-year document also on April ninth at a work session. Um, we'll be opening up the, uh, service orgs on April first and then it may close on April twenty-eighth. So then in May, we'll bring forward to a work session for council, the service orgs that have presented and just make sure that we know which ones that you want to see.
Ken, I'm just for a second, because it's last time around, y'all had a discussion about do you want to keep doing it the same way? We don't have any direction other than what we've done in the past, so if y'all are gonna make a change on that, that's something that the council needs to talk about.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of service orgs and cross-service orgs.
Mm-hmm.
But right now, just to be clear, we have that kind of standing guidance about who presents and who doesn't, and, and, you know, based on levels and all that kind of good stuff, who hadn't been before council for a while. So if y'all, again, I'm gonna restate, if you're going to change that, we need to know, because that's what we communicate to these service orgs.
And if I remember correctly, those guidelines were roughly, if they haven't changed their requests, then we don't, uh, routinely ask them to come in, um, if it's less than some dollar amount, was it ten thousand?
Seventy.
Then we don't ask them to come in, um, and, and so that's gonna be the guidelines you'll use going forward, unless you want to change it, we can, it's completely up to us, yes, sir. Just to give ideas of what they do, you know, kind of interest themselves. I think we did, but I'm not sure that we had a real strong, uh, strict, uh, guideline on that, that was a kind of soft. I, 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 that's something for the.
But, but is it something that you would like to do? I mean, those of you that don't know what, actually, you know, there might be one, you don't know what they do, and it's simply a matter of communication before you approve your request.
Yeah, let me add it too, the other side of that is, should give away the, so, okay, part that, for just the moment, that question, so, talk about, you had asked us to consolidate.
Oh, yeah.
That was the other part, that was part two of that conversation, so.
So, um, just to continue on, in June, we'll move forward, we'll have the public hearing for crime control and then again, we'll do the budget one-on-one proper, uh, presentation like we've done in the past, we can talk about the seesaw and all that. Um, and then in July, based on the feedback that we received, we normally have four budget workshops, but, um, some feedback we received is could we put some together and have maybe one less? And so what we did is, um, on July fifteenth, these are all Mondays, July fifteenth, we will have the service organizations, the special revenue funds and the water sewer fund. Uh, and then on July twenty-second, um, that's when we'll talk about the general fund and that service. Uh, we get certified values on the twenty-fifth, and so we'll be working up what the tax rate is at being based on our certified values. So on the twenty-ninth is when we return with the final budget, uh, for council and, and, and that's the budget that we have taken all the feedback that you've given us and incorporated that into that, that final document. Uh, and then in August, we need, uh, to, um, file that proposed budget by August fifth, um, and then council will vote on August thirteenth for a maximum proposed tax rate. You are not voting on the tax rate, you're just voting on the maximum tax rate that I can advertise. Uh, and then it shows you, you know, for some reason you want to call a special election because you want to go over the, um, the, the, uh.
Three point five.
Yes, the three point four nine nine, um, tax rate, you would need to call an election, and then on the twenty-seventh, is when we would bring forward, um, the vote on the budget and the tax rate. Uh, and then, um, September tenth would really be the last time that we could vote on a budget, and that's simply because uh, the timing of our final, uh, meeting in September is after when the county requests for us to give them what our tax rate is gonna be so that they can start developing the bills. So, um, and then October first, we start all over again, so. Do you have any questions on this?
Just a reminder, the reason that we requested a, a consolidation of the budget meetings in July was that we had a couple of meetings for like thirty-five minutes long, they were very short. So just eliminating one meeting a month, so, so about that. Any questions about that?
So I'll, I'll go ahead and bring that since this subject was reached, I guess, um. On the service orgs, I think the balance that we were trying to, or at least I was hoping to get is, how much, how much do we spend on service orgs, is it quarter of a million dollars, you know, do you know?
This year it was a one sixty, wasn't it?
Um, and school will spend about twenty, fifty thousand, and that didn't, doesn't account for what we give the chamber for the, um, average, discover a couple of.
So quarter of a million dollars, and if, if I remember correctly, we would spend like a whole budget meeting just on that topic. And we had a couple of other small ones. So while I, I do think it is important that we vet all the service organizations adequately. It is a quarter of a million dollars out of a sixteen, not million dollar budget or something like that. So we're trying to balance the amount of time we spend on that piece of it versus what we spend on, like, the general fund, which has millions of dollars in it, and we go through it in about the same amount of time, so that's, so, I guess I bring up the discussion, is there, do we need to refine how we come up with the service orgs? Or do we, do we need to review the list and only call them the ones that are brand new or come up with some new criteria? So I guess I'll open it up for thoughts on that, because of the amount of the dollar amount we're talking about, right?
Um, you know, I think, I mean, we, we have, we can also, we're, we've, uh, many of the sort of service organizations who are applying, uh, you know, Brown and, uh, Normal, and, um, you know, we, we support, um, many of their, their roles and their services. Um, so it's, it's somewhat redundant for us, but I, I think it's important for us to hear, um, if they make some type of adjustment to their request, I think, uh, we need to know one. And, you know, this is, um, the aspect is running and we're giving out, so I think we've got to, you know, do our due diligence on these, um, before giving, even if it's not just a small portion of the, um, overall budget.
So connect your recommendation is that we give them a, a certain amount of time that they have to present and a certain amount of time for questions. Um, you know, five minutes present, five minutes for questions, and that, that may help, and that we hold them to that, that we make them aware, you only have this amount of time, and, and cut them off if they start to go over. I mean, that, we, we as staff could do that for you, I think we've done that in the past.
John? This, I guess they're, um, I think we're not spending enough time, I think she could have over doubled, tripled the time, so. So that, more so than just passing the, 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 more than the funding just from the council, so. And also just, like, what, what I said also, it, it's just updating the council and handling the relationship. I know this, when you said development wise and percentage wise and how much time spent, but it is that relationship that you possibly go with, there are several limitations, so, just, just a thought, and, you know, I don't know, but it is a thought.
So, if we spend two and a half hours on service organizations based on their budget.
So if we spend two and a half hours on service organizations based on their budget, then that would mean if we wanted to spend equal power on the rest of the budget, it comes out to be something like we, each one of us would have to spend six hundred and seventy four hours on on the budget. So that's that's the that's the ratio she was talking about. Um, I I I hear both sides of it and, oh, so Kevin had a comment next.
No, I I missed this, uh, cause I mean, we're talking about the threshold, it's like if it's, if it's over ten thousand dollars, we don't talk, but they don't.
If it's ten thousand, if it's less than ten thousand, they they aren't required by your policy to kind of, or if they don't increase it, the amount, then they don't need to come.
Okay, yeah, I think I think the big thing is like, you know, if somebody presented it last year, I really, you know, like, I think it's pretty fresh. I don't think we need a fresh presentation. I definitely see my dear, you know, your thoughts about, like, you know, really, you know, making sure that we can also have an opportunity here. But I would say that if there are, if there are somebody here before, um, you know, like, I I don't know if that's different than our policy right now, but really, and I'm trying to go back and think on like, if we're giving a threshold that kind of, and it's like, let's say they don't ask for more than twenty five percent or something like that. Completely, I don't know, it's green light, we just went to increase their ask. And, you know, without, you know, without triggering us, you know, doing a, uh, you know, a presentation. So I'm kind of, you know, really, you know, on setting up a threshold on that. But I am, I think that that some of them were looking to get a little tentative, especially when they were asked. And I know we're trying to be just what the organization, but they were asking for like fifteen hundred dollars or or two thousand dollars. And and, you know, I mean, that is a very small percentage of our budget. So I'm not sure if I'm disrespectful, because I'm sure that's a lot of money to that particular service organization. But um, I feel that to things like, um, those, you know, that are each part, like, they were asking for a hundred thousand dollars. We can hear things like that, that's incredibly important, uh, on that. So I don't know if I've given them guidance or anything, but I I do agree with you, just in the sense that I'd love to streamline that process and make that a little bit more powerful considering the percentage of money that they're particularly asking for.
Randy? I I just wanna offer a perspective out there for you to consider. If you look at all the funds that you budget, there are certain things that are out there considering, if we know we're gonna spend those money, those are sort of, think of it from a home standpoint, that's your mortgage, right? You know, we're gonna spend, they're gonna make your mortgage payment every single month. There are other things that are discretionary, and then there's discretionary within the operation, and then there's discretionary around things. These are not operational costs, these are true discretionary costs, these are with somewhere ahead. So when you think about funding with those three buckets, now the question comes out is, what do you use council? And by the way, I totally hit it on that we said it last wrong. But I just want you to think about it from a central of, when you look into the community is asking, how much time will you spend? They're probably not gonna say spend, you know, favorite, when you're obligated to spend, that's not a question. Instead of discretionary dollars that become um more of an issue for the community, if they choose to make it so. Yeah, they might not choose to make it so, but if somebody chooses to make it so, I, as you think about it, think about it that way. And let decide if the time matches, you know, if the juice is worth the screen, so.
Um, I hear you done, and I.
But you're gonna disagree.
Yes, um, because I agree with, I agree with Mark. Um, so, and I wanna be mindful too, and I hear you Kevin too, because you were saying if we heard them last year, we're we're about to have a new council member regardless, right? So I think we, I wanna be mindful of that. There was a time when we spent a lot of time on service organizations and um, and sometimes it was for five hundred dollars, right?
Hmm.
And there has to be a happy medium, and I think we we've talked about this issue round and round every single year, and we can change it as we alter it as we need to. But um, I I think, um, if we put, you know, we can put time limits on our time on our organizations, on what they give us, we can ask them to specifically address certain things. Um, I think knowing how they service, how and there's been an increase in the number of people that they service, um, I think is important to know. And if there's an increase, obviously, is what their ask is. But um, you know, I I wanna make sure that we don't send out the message of, you know, if it's five thousand dollars, it's no big deal, and we'll just give you money. Because we have had a time too when then we end up getting asks from all over the place that had never been moved before too. And so I just, I I I just wanna be mindful of the message that we're sending out to organizations. And knowing that, um, also it's an opportunity to educate and we educate our council members and our community on the fact that we have these services and resources. So, um, I don't know what that happy medium is, maybe it's that time when it's, um, I wanna be mindful of the fact that we will have at least one new council member um this midterm, and so we gotta just make sure that we also provide that information. Thank you.
You've got Kevin, Mark, and Jim.
I'm just kind of sitting here thinking, I don't know if there's a good appetite to, in council, creating this, I don't know, there's very high funds. So I was saying that I couldn't show me the debate that that is two hundred thousand dollars. And that goes available for service organizations to be able to apply for. And based on the criteria, so yeah, like, we're necessarily who teaching the digital service organizations, um, you know, pass that we could support them by further students as council, and allow them to uh popular funds on criteria is very. After that, so that way we start having, oh, a firm one or not, you know, like, we have, you know, idea of what we want, and then just a lot of service organizations, so we're still not. And then.
I think that would be really difficult to administer from a city standpoint, because the the whoever's making the decision, who is what, is gonna come back to you and ask you that question anyway. And, but we already have criteria on, you know, the the level of those four categories, the success, I mean. We have those four categories, but when it comes down to, if you fix them out, then, you know, the requests, you know, not able to really live in that. So someone's gonna have to make a decision who will spend some of that, so yeah, we've got, um, okay, Mark next.
Um, I'm not gonna agree with, um, when I'm, um, this motivation, I think we need to give them some criteria. Um, I'm justifying, so thank you, that, you know, how these surveys help them, um, you know, select, so they fill, um, for example, talk about their budgets, um, you know, those three items, I think, are critical. And sometimes we just get a shiny, oh, uh, view that doesn't really give us um a a lot of information. So I think they know kind of the things that we look for. Uh, we're like, that's gone, he's done a great job, and, you know, they they, you know, tell the the story of the, um, needs they fulfill towards the community uh that, you know, we're having this necessity. So, um, with that, uh, I, uh, we should, uh, you know, limit their their time and give them a focus.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, you've got fun, and all the others, so it's a nice time, I'm interested, because maybe, it's a certain session, maybe, it's just one of those things, I think. I don't want, you know, it's, um, it's like, it's like, I don't know, if we can have, to everybody, I would give someone very, you know, you know, it's a great shot.
So I would love to set up a group of three, a subcommittee, to come back with a recommendation to the council. Um, this was clearly by the amount of time that we spend talking about this every year, if you're in the board to us. I'd like the, the group of three to come back to the council by April first, uh, which is when the service organizations' applications open. And then make a recommendation, you know, written recommendation on the process and the, the criteria. And that includes a time for presentation, that's fine, they'll leave it up to the group of three. Um, looking for volunteers at this point, realizing that more has occurred through that work, the senior managers, the evaluation process, and that was helping out with the P E and the boss, I mean.
Kevin.
Kevin. So can I get a few questions for me a couple of times between April first and then come back with a recommendation for us? Say, you know.
John.
I don't know. First thing was great, but let's see, so. Well, I think.
I'm sorry for no one, man, but it'll take time to happen.
I think as a vision. You judge that, Don, we, I would say, if he were here for six days after I.
Don, just to clarify, what I think is the problem is, um, the amount of, let's say, for instance, I know one time we already go over four thousand dollars for the orchestra. Um, so it's a known, a known service org and a nominal dollar amount, and that's, I really think, the problem. I, I completely agree with the idea of relationship with these organizations and understanding what they're doing. I have no qualms whatsoever making sure people are aware and educated on what their organizations are. I just want to make sure we aren't getting bogged down on the four thousand dollar, really nominal decisions. That's, and maybe that's not so much whether or not the works come in and talk to us as we gotta manage ourselves and not get bogged down on that type of thing.
And it may also be setting some criteria on how the service organization makes their presentation as well.
Completely agree with that, limit, limit what they present to us and hit a certain point.
I'll leave it up to you three guys.
I think we've done it, I think we've got it all talked out. Love them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think that's enough.
All right, I think Kim has got some more, or you?
I, that was.
All right. Thanks, Karen.
Welcome. Thank you very much.
You're good.
All right, uh, let, let me offer from a process standpoint, you've been now going for a, an hour and forty-five minutes. Uh, would you like to, we, we have one item left that could take a few minutes. So would anyone like to take a, a quick break before we hit that last item and talk about future budget? We can power through it, uh, or we can everyone take a break and then come back, like five, six minutes.
Stick a five-minute break if you don't mind, yeah. Or be recessed for five minutes.
City council considerations.
I don't think so. To be able to pluck it up and then we'll, uh. We'll talk about this.
All right, council, future council considerations, this is somewhat the catch-all opportunity for us to talk about things. Uh, one is some of the operational issues that a few of you raised in the, uh, in my meetings with you. And then the second, are there things from a budget standpoint, um, you know, or any other items that we need to have with consideration, work session agendas for and what have you? Let me just say that there was one issue that came up.
Oh, what for business someone has to talk about this. So just be careful that we don't get into the, you know, we can talk about that, we may need to discuss it at a later date.
Right, but we can't discuss it.
That's right. We can't.
So, yeah, everything that we're talking about is just one of those issues that we need to be thinking about for the future that we need to have discussion on, that we need to create work session on, staff will be taking notes on this, uh, to make sure that we're together on it. Um, so let's start with, one of the things that you all talked about, several of you talked about to, in, in our meetings, is how do we continue to fight that balance between wanting a very efficient meeting and also wanting to make sure that everything is discussed and full? Every council goes through that, every board goes through that, you know? Sometimes you find yourself, in essence, arguing over sort of change. Sometimes they, their very big strategic ideas get done in ten or fifteen minutes, right? So there's always that push and pull around that. Um, I, I am gonna suggest that every, in a couple of bits. There's actually a bit of a disadvantage if you don't talk through issues publicly. Because the folks that are watching you are looking at you and going, well, this is all just a, it's a done deal. So there's an advantage to being able to do that for the community. Likewise, there's a disadvantage if that amount goes too long because they begin to think this is a train wreck. So one council, uh, member described it as our, our council meetings are must-see TV in our community because everyone knows there's going, it's gonna go off the rails. It's, it's like, you know, watching WWE. Uh, so finding that balance is always hard to do, and every council will have to do that. I'm gonna suggest that that becomes a conversation for when you have a new council. Uh, and you might think, well, we've only had one new member, yep, but it's a new council. Because one member will change the dynamics of the, of the council. So for those of you who raised that, if that's something that got deferred to formal discussion after that, after the new council was seated in the spring, would you be okay with that? In the meantime, let me ask you all to also consider the decisions that we're discussing. There's the actual decision, you know, there's the perception around the decision. Uh, and how does it look, how do we function? I, I'm working with the council later, you know, like in the next month, where developers have told them, we choose not to develop with you because, in your city, because your council is so dysfunctional. That's the extreme. You, you're a hundred and eighty almost for that. But let's realize that balance and, you know, the preparation that you do in the beforehand makes a difference. The fact that you can especially share questions with staff in advance is really, really important. Because even if staff, I mean, if, if Mike stands up, and I'll pick on Mike on this one, if Mike stands up and says, council, I'll have to research that. If he does that once every now and then, everybody goes, okay, well, that's normal. If every conversation is Mike saying, I have to go research that, then pretty soon people begin to wonder, is Mike, does Mike know what he's doing or not, right? So just realizing that how we do those things matters, I think if we could do that, that would be helpful. The other thing that you talked about with me was, um, being more proactive versus reactive. A couple of you said, how does council be more proactive? You can, again, that can be part of your next, uh, council issue, I mean, you, you're, you're moving into this, but in June, halfway through your year, you'll have a brand-new council. You can talk about how do we become more, more proactive as a council? Um, again, let me awkwardly, you know, you have made tremendous strides by saying, we're going to look ahead, that, that budget conversation around all those allocated funds. Somebody's being proactive and thinking about paying for those things. Now, you can be proactive as well. The opposite of that, again, is what you see in many cities, and quite frankly, you see in a lot of nonprofits too, that are, that are just sort of running on a shoestring, is every day is a new day, every year is a new year, and it's hard to create that continuity. Uh, and continuity is crucial to a city. So those are two things that you brought up that I would suggest you table or, or move to a, a future date, if you're okay with that. There was one issue also around, um, an employment-related issue that was brought up by one of you. Obviously, we can't talk about personnel issues around that, uh, to the extent that that's a process issue. You can talk about that in either work session or, um, executive sessions, we, you know. But that comment, um, there was a comment made about how do we ensure security? That one has been shared, but that's probably better off dealt with in, in work session and/or executive session. Does that make sense? Usually you and I talk about that especially. Uh, so with that in mind, let's talk about, let, let me open that, that was my list of things that you talked to me about. Are there other future council considerations that you want to make sure we, we address going forward? We'll just open it up and take notes. By the way, Wes, knowing that the last time this came up, we created a committee, everyone might be quiet.
Kevin. Shocker, me, um, no, um, yeah, Don said something last night that I wanted to kind of talk a little bit more about, uh, you know, uh, you said, you mentioned something about like Old Town and, you know, it kind of is what it is now, but if we want bigger and grander, you know, uh, plans for that, like, you know, making a decision about like committing funds, you know, committing, uh, resources, you know, to that area. So I, I mentioned something about, you know, potentially creating a strategic plan specifically for Old Town. I think the way that this council approaches Old Town is that we get presented something, whether it's in exec or work session or something like that, you know, or some sort of project down there, and we just look at it and we're like, uh, yeah, okay, I think that works down there, and there's no wait. And, and so, um, I kind of go back to what we talked about before about, um, you know, I think that there were, there were a, a vision of the past of what, you know, these councils thought Old Town should be, but I don't know if this council knows what Old Town should be. So I would love an opportunity to sit down with a new council member after they're, uh, elected and really have a discussion about what we really want and try to get that, I know it, it may not be, you know, everybody on, you know, the same way, but if we can get some sort of consensus about like, you know, what types of businesses we want to go down there, if you understand that there are, you know, market considerations, but, uh, maybe even like looking at examples of, you know, other cities, town squares and downtowns and stuff, and even get, you know, just a, a visual representation, oh, I want it to look a little like this versus like, you know, like this. I want more walkable, you know, I want more, you know, modern shops, I want a bigger, you know, like, I want to think we have an idea of what we want Old Town to look like. And, and we, we got input from citizens, you know, we can continue to do that. But I think until this council has a good idea of what Old Town looks like, we're still gonna sit there and have these moments of indecision where we're sitting there saying, well, is that a good idea, is it not a good idea? And kind of goes back to that idea of, of wasting time in meetings. If we had clear direction and an idea of where we're going, we could be, we could be quicker on the draw, making decisions about it. Is, does that fit our goal? So that's what I'd like to see, is just more strategic planning around the Old Town concept.
We've heard from citizens, we've heard from businesses, we're hearing from the Chamber of Commerce. I guess it comes down to me is, are we as a council ready to make up our mind? And that's kind of going, I, um, we can have an Old Town session anytime we want to. Um, and Mike and I have talked about doing it, we actually discussed having it part of, as part of this retreat. And our view is, we, we, the, the tendency of this council has been to listen to a lot of information and then take a ball to make up our minds. And I don't, I mean, I would be more than happy to schedule another committee if you want to do that. Just kidding, or have a, a, a meeting to, you know, to, to talk specifically about Old Town. I don't think we're ready to do that yet. Collectively.
Well, ma, mayor, I, I would ask is, a, and I know that's kind of your, your gut feeling on, on what you're seeing and stuff, but like, I guess, what do we, what do we need to do, and I'm kind of asking the bottom, what do we need to do to get to a position? Like, are we looking for better market conditions, or are we looking, you know, like, what do we need to do to get into a position where we can make decisions?
Talk to you, then I want to come back and offer your perspective.
Breanna?
And maybe your perspective will help with that because I, I think I'm in the same place, you know, I am in the same place that Kevin is, and I think that, you're right, mayor, a lot of times it's, the council wants a lot of information, and we, we want input, and that's, that's what we should do. But at some point, we've got to start to put some guardrails. And so we don't necessarily have to make a decision on what is Old Town where we're necessarily saying it's got to look a certain way, like, we've already shifted over the years and over councils on what it is. But just to have some sort of guardrails that will help staff with the type of, um, development that we're looking for, or restaurants or shops or retail, whatever it might be, right? And then for it to fit somewhere, and then for us to be able to be more efficient in our conversations. Um, like, I want us to have those conversations up at the dais because we, we want our citizens to be aware of that. But at the same time, sometimes we just look, it, it just comes off as just not being on the same page and, and having those discussions up on the dais rather than having it in a work session. So, um, I would love to somehow get to a point where we say, like you said, Kevin, what is it that we need to get there? And if we're not gonna get there, is the next step to at least create some guardrails? And, and start to look if there's any encumbrances that we need to think about, or any particular obstacles that might be an issue that we need to address ahead of time. And I say that because it might be where there's gas lines or there's other things that maybe we can be more proactive on.
Beezy, you want to make a quick comment, and then I'm gonna come back and ask you a question from the council. John.
John. Did you raise your hand, Walker?
Yeah. So I, I'm beginning to think that was, but, you know, a lot of residents in the Old Town, they mentioned that they wouldn't, it's like they went there is because they were expecting some of the activities that we have on the weekends, right? To get together, whether it be the movies or the. And we had, though, we actually did, it was right. Um, that's just the way it was developed, also the most size around the city as well, and I've asked them, I said, well, it's not, you know, it's either Irving or Louisville, and so. So it was, we tried to, maybe, there's a, it's that we don't have consistency. We went, had it, we sporadically, what was it, twice a year, three times a year, and then there's a break in, I guess, Canada, so now we have only twice a year, maybe once a year, I, I don't know. And that's, there, there was that issue of having not been consistent, having, you know, we've got, I see many other cities downtown, they didn't have a consistent activity on weekends, so we were consistent with the people. So you put your, my, my, consistently, I think that's where we could have, we could actually draw on businesses that might be interested in investing.
I, I hear, you're bringing up very excellent points, but we've got to remember our agenda.
Right, so, so let, 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 let me offer, I, I thought I could ask a question. You have a lot of information around Old Town, you have a lot of ideas around Old Town. Is there a consistent vision for Old Town? Yeah, and so to me, because it, it's not the plan for Old Town, it's the, the plan follows the vision. So let, let me give you a, um, an, an example. Uh, all of you have been to Addison Circle Park at some point, right? When Addison Circle Park was done, it started, that was all vacant land. And except for some old buildings that needed to be done, and the theater, conference center thing they have there was there. But they, they started with a vision, and the vision was, for the park, a, uh, a, a conference and meeting space that is outdoors and adaptable. That was, that was the vision. Conference and meeting spaces outdoors and adaptable. Now, out of that, everybody, they, they, they found that vision. And then they said, now, what are all the steps that had to go into that? And by the way, those steps changed over the years. It was ten years after they created that vision before they ever broke dirt on that whole area down there because they had to then acquire the land, do the stuff, get everything done, worry about utility lines, all those other things. But at least at that point, the staff was working toward the vision for what they wanted the space to be. Yeah. Here, the good news for them, that you don't have, there was nothing really competing with that vision already. And so you have a vision that has either been on purpose or it's just sprung up from, you know, all the little incremental decisions have created the vision. So my question for you as council is, is it time not to worry about the plan, but to first talk about what is a consistent vision? Um, would that help you move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
I can speak to that, that's exactly what I'm saying, is that, you know, I, I, I just, ever since I've been on council, I feel that we just get presented things of like, do you think this fits down there or not? And I just feel like we're just throwing something at the wall, like, um, it's, I, like, you know, there's such a mixture of new and old down there, so what, you know, what old down there should be preserved versus what old down there should be redeveloped, um, you know?
Let's stay up.
No, no, I, I know, yeah, but I'm.
We're, we're not gonna, we're, I, I really am, like, I'm, I'm not. Yeah, we're not gonna talk about the issue.
I'm not talking about specifics, but, but like, how can I talk about it if I can't talk about it?
Your face is so foggy, but just up to the level.
We have to read it.
Yeah, I, 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 trying to be respectful, you know, I, I, I appreciate, but like, but, but that's my thing was like, is I don't know the decision that I should make for the best, for the betterment of the community if I'm not sure what the vision is, and that's why I continue to get frustrated, is that I don't know what's, what our vision is as a whole. And so I think we talk about the council's inability to make decisions sometimes, it's because I don't understand what the big picture is. So I can't go up there and then advocate for what the big picture is if I don't understand what it is.
So maybe somebody can move this forward. Um, we can't vote on this, but I, we can, you know, I'll sort of check. Is, is there a consensus that council would like to have a, an updated vision for Old Town? Because, I mean, there, there would be people that would say, you've got one now, and, and they go back to however many years that was done. So really what you're talking about is updating the vision for Old Town, so I'm seeing some head nods, would that be useful? Okay, so future council consideration. The second piece would be useful, is how do we get there? Because, um, I'll give you three paths, and you can choose one, whichever one you want. One is, you could go to your very capable staff and say, hey, create some vision for Old Town, bring it to us. And they'll give you something to look at, okay? That's one thing. They might even give you, give us a couple of options for Old Town, you can provide that direction, and they will do that to you, for you. You can say, we, we as a community want to do that. It's kind of been your practice to some degree, but you could also say, we've done that already, it's time to consolidate that information. But you could have a visioning committee for Old Town. Or you as council could say, we want to sit, we want to create a session that's a very work-oriented session for council and staff, staff can bring some ideas, we want to add our ideas. So there's three different kind of paths to get to where you want to go. Which one of those paths would you like to pursue, or combination paths?
Hey, mayor, um, now can, Breanna, can you clarify exactly what the original, original, you know, it was? And where was it at this point?
Well, I think, okay, so before you go.
Yeah, I think that might get into.
Yeah, we're, we're starting to move further into the weeds on that.
Well, I just wanted to see where it was, and because we talked about it wrong, right? But, I mean, where are we, so, from what it was?
At a very high level, there had been at least, at least three different visions for what is now Old Town. And that goes back twenty-four years now. And where we are is nothing where it started from. Um, and to Randy's point, you know, we, the original vision was not even anything that we're close to now. And that's part of the difficulty that the community's had, is that just due to economic conditions primarily, things have changed.
And, and it was originally more of a historic feel, by the way, I, I, there, there's a TV show out there about remodeling houses, I'm not sure if you've ever seen, seen this episode. I happened to find it, it's this guy started building this house out in the middle of like Nevada someplace. And it started off with, you know, this three thousand square foot cabin, and now it's like four stories, and it goes off in every different direction, and every time something happens, he decides to add on to it, and he's doing it. That's kind of what your vision has become for Old Town. Um, it, it's sort of been added on to, uh, over the years as people said, this isn't working, I'll add, let's add, let's try this. Yeah?
Yeah, so you made a statement about the Addison Circle, I forget exactly which words were, but it was, they were different because they weren't restrained by something that was already there?
Well, yeah, there, there was land there, and there was obviously, that land was owned and zoned, but there wasn't existing structure on it.
Yeah, so I, I think that's what I've been struggling with, I think, Kevin, I agree with Kevin, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't feel like we have any kind of real plan, you know, what are we gonna do with Old Town? But in terms of, you know, the idea of a vision, it just seems to me that it's more of what do we do with what we have? And what it is to come, as the mayor pointed out, it's gone through some permutations. And based on what we have, where would we like to be? But I, we can't ignore that, on the one hand, we have preservationists that, that, you know, it means the world to them to preserve the structures that they have, and there's investment quite a bit in that. And we have a highly contemporary design art center, almost catty-cornered each other. And so, you know, I, I guess when it comes to, you know, this word drives me nuts, but visioning, um, Old Town, I'd be real interested in just knowing, what does anyone even see as our option?
That would be part of the, that would have to be part of your discussion, absolutely.
I mean, what, what do we even have that we can do, given what's already been done? I mean, if, and where are we in the process? Are we, is Old Town eighty percent complete? Is it ninety percent complete? Do we expand the footprint? Is many proposed during one work session is an option? You know, I I'm kind of lost in trying to figure out, you know, and I'm giving this a lot of thought. I've gone down there and I've talked to some of the business people and I'm kind of lost in, you know, it's more like, what do we do with what we already have? And and that to me is, is kind of, so it's very different from like starting from scratch.
It's not a blank sheet of paper.
It's not, it's not. And that's, that's, that's what I've been struggling with.
So I think Randy brought up a good point. We've got, you know, actually you left out one option that is out there. We could always go back to our standard mode and hire consultants to tell us. But um, you know, we've got staff, we've got community and we've got the council. Um, all those are very viable. What, you know, we can, and we can certainly do any one of them. Um, what's our next step in that? Do we ask staff? Do we ask the community again? And I say again, because we've kind of.
You've done that once.
Um, or do we, or do we want to set aside special time for us to discuss it, you know, in 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 depth? Mark?
I think uh to answer uh Randy's question on the direction, um, future consideration, we need to fully understand the original vision. The subsequent um changes that were made to that vision.
And and why.
Yeah, and and why. Fully understand how we got to where we are today. And is that original vision even achievable with some type of overhaul to to what what we've done? Um, and then after we understand that, I think we can, we can lay out a plan or I hate to put out a new vision, but a plan to get where we were wanting to be in the first place. Um, and I I think um input from staff is obviously very helpful. Um, and they could help us along with that. Um, but I think the uh having people in the um, in the community, um, after we've, you know, established what we have to do, you know, how to ask them how, how they think we can achieve that. And then we've got to look at the economic realities of um of um the direction we take. I mean, I'm I'm assuming that the project that uh we approved a while back i- is is maybe not moving forward. I haven't gotten an update on that. So um, you know, I think we were kind of hoping that that would be m- moving in the right direction. Um, so uh with that, I think we just have to, everybody has to be brought up to speed to understand the original um and updated visions.
So it sounds like there's more work to be done.
Yeah.
That starts with calibrating where we are.
Apparently I skipped Brianna a couple of times, so sorry.
That's okay. No, and I, and Mark, I think you're right on point. I think that's where I was going to go. We we started that conversation at some point and Mikey can remind me when we did that. Because I remember having, starting the conversation around like, I I staff and I shared some of the background of where we were and what that vision was. And I, and I think parts of that um actually, I think there is some part of Old Town that does resemble what the vision was. And then it, it changed along the way for different reasons and more. And that's like you said, we just need a level set on where we were, where we are, and then what's left. And what do we do with those particular pieces of that puzzle? So that we have something that doesn't look like it's piecemealed. And I, and I think that's kind of where sometimes I feel that we're some, you know, and and that's on all of us. Like, we're, we're just kind of disorganized and we don't have some consistent plan of what we're doing going forward, even though we know there's going to be some things that like market changes or a really good opportunity that comes. But at the end of the day, there are parts down there that were part of the original vision. Um, and then things that just change along the way. So um, yes, I think you're right. We we do need some, some more time, but really dedicated to just this, for us to talk through, to level set, to ask the questions. And then for us to have some sort of, I think like you mentioned with Addison, some sort of plan of what are the next steps and where do we go with that? And then where do the financials come into this? And then is this a, 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 a five year, a ten year, where do we go from, from here? And and what does that look like?
So I've got.
Yeah.
So we've got, this is clearly going to be a fifth Tuesday type of discussion. So logistically, we've got April thirtieth and July thirtieth are our next two. Do we want to do it as soon as April thirtieth? That would mean that we do not have a a a new council, Beavis Council, Kevin.
Mayor, just something to consider, I know that staff, you know, I mentioned that they were going to present some findings about like, uh, you know, like the food truck things and stuff like that. Um, yeah, I I think that probably needs to be part of the discussion as well. Plus, I really want to have our new council member um involved in that. Because I don't want to have a discussion and then just have to restart over discussion again. Just that's my, my feelings.
Should be looking at July.
So I was thinking, I actually was favoring July myself. Um, what I'm going to propose is that we bring staff in and it's going to be a combination of staff and council. Um, we, uh, who was, was it Matt, I believe? Had a, had begun, you know, kind of a history and we've seen part of that will enhance that. Um, there's actually people that were here that are still living in town that were part of that original vision for the, for the area. So we can bring them in and ask their opinion, kind of make sure that we've got the facts straight. Since none of us were on council back then. Um, and then we can, we'll, we'll set up a, an agenda where the council will, will have the the feedback from staff and hopefully be able to create that, that vision or plan or whatever we want to call it.
And, you know, the, and I realize there's going to be information. To to the extent that you can, I think there's, there's got to be some just discussion. Uh, let me also offer one of the things that I've noticed over the years, that everything that frustrates you or excites you in a community was probably someone's great idea to solve what was then an important problem fifteen to twenty years ago. So everything that frustrates you about Old Town was somebody's good idea to solve an important problem. Everything that excites you about Old Town was someone's good idea to solve an important problem. Uh, it's just that the environment has changed. And one of the challenges that you as council, I would encourage you to think about that. Is, Don, you mentioned last night, think bolder, a bold vision for things? Bold visions take take more than your terms. You know, ten years in the life of the city is nothing. So, you know, you realize that it might take ten, fifteen years before the seed that you planted actually goes into, you know, grows into something that's visible.
Don?
Sort of, as I've been thinking through some of this, um, I go back to, I don't know what problem, to your point, I don't know what problem council originally was trying to solve for Old Town. And I say problem, that I don't know if that means there was much vacant land, they wanted to do conference center. I mean, I don't know what it was. And that's what I feel like we've sort of lost. I don't know, like, when we try to come up with, what are we going to do with Old Town? Well, what do we, why do we care at all? I mean, what do, do we want it to be a residential area? Do we want it? I don't know what the original problem that we're trying to solve. So when they come and offer a new idea, food trucks or anything else, what, is that solving what the original problem was?
So understanding what problem you're trying to solve is going to be crucial then.
And understanding what the original problem was and is that still a problem? I say problem, that may not be the opportunity. What do we, what is it? Why are we putting any effort at all to it? Uh, so I, it goes back to even before the plan, like what? What do we even try?
What what are we trying to look at?
Or what do we need to accomplish?
By the way, people in organizations, even communities, we all change for basically one of two reasons. There's a problem we're trying to solve, there's an opportunity we're trying to pursue. And so it's um, understanding that would be, that's good counsel for the planning for this process. All right, any other additional council consider, considerations for, that you want the council to think about?
Yeah, Old Town or we're talking about?
Any of them. Yeah, we have a direction on Old Town. To go further than that in Old Town kind of takes us off the topic really.
Brianna?
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you. Randy, you would, you'd remember this. Um, there was a time when, and so I'm just throwing this out, this as a potential, so stated that, but Randy, you were a part of this. Um, there was a time when we had a, a big focus in our community and especially on behalf of council for health and wellness. And um.
Kevin will remember it too.
Yeah, and Kevin was there. And we, we, there was a lot of time and effort put into it. Um, and then it just kind of fizzled. Um, and yet we've recently heard a lot around, um, the issues with fentanyl, mental health, other things. So I think just for throwing it out there as a conversation, is there anything that we might want to do to focus or refocus on health and wellness of the community?
So the way of history, council created as part of the twenty thirty vision. Uh, it it became part of this thing known as Living Well and Compass. Uh, it was a phenomenal idea. There was no other place in the commu- in the state that has done any of this. There are very few places in the country that have even attempted something like this. The, the idea was to create a separate five oh one C three organization that would then focus on promoting wellness, physical, emotional, uh, nutritional, mental, there's the, across the entire. We, we brought a group together, Brianna was part of it, Kevin was part of it. Uh, that group met for a few years, they had some success. It very quickly turned into, oh, let's have a, let's have a wellness competition on the HEB walk um, thing. And it sort of became that, which was really good because Capel is very, very competitive. And congratulations, you were the best in the state for like two years. You won that competition. Um, the five oh one C three created both opportunities and disadvantages. So I'm, I'm providing this background to say, if you choose forward, I want you to give the right considered direction. The five oh one C three one challenge is, that group was technically separate from the city. Even though it had city support, there were, there was a, an assistant or deputy city manager on that group that met with us all the time. We met in the city offices. Uh, they, they hired me to help sort of facilitate and keep the thing going and get it organized and keep it moving in the direction for a year uh that we, that we continued on. And it created the opportunity for that group to raise additional money that then could be going, that could then go toward uh wellness activities and focus. That was an advantage of the five oh one C three. The disadvantage of that is the five oh one C three has to have a certain, so they have to have a structure in place. And in hindsight, they, they put three individuals in charge. All three highly committed, very good people. Um, but you had a three headed monster running it. Um, which then made it difficult to continue to move forward. And there wasn't the desire to create the structure and succession to keep that going. Keeping a not-for-profit going is really hard work. You have, it's like a startup in a business. So if you choose to do that, and I don't disagree with you, Brian, I think it's a wonderful idea that very few communities other than someone like Capel could do. But think clearly about, do you want it to be uh, a city initiative? Like Fort Worth did blue cities, blue zones a few years back, that was a city initiative. San Antonio has done a weight loss initiative in the past. Um, do you want it to be an initiative or do you want it to be an ongoing effort? Um, and I'll, I'll tell you that there's a different strategy for each. Some years ago, I was chairman of the board for the American Heart Association in Texas when Texas got the tobacco settlement money. Um, and one of the things that we promoted, because we can't lie, we promoted very far, was to use that money to create an ongoing structure of investment rather than what some members of the legislature wanted to do is let's spend it all, let's spend all sixty, seventy five million in two years and be done. So that's an initiative versus the ongoing effort. By the way, there is still a wellness activity at the state level that's funded out of that initial investment because of the strategy they used. So just thinking about if you want to handle it, how you want to pursue it, that will give some staff some guidance to bring back to.
Wes, can I just add one thing to that? Um, the other piece to it was when we originally put the group together that included a lot of people from across the work, the, the community was also looking for um, like input on any, anywhere that we could make policy changes. And so there was a big discussion around what use of cell phones. But then that was when the state, you know, um, did something around, you know, the driving in the school district area. And then at one point we had conversations around, do we become a city that's um, has a policy on like no smoking within a certain distance of buildings? We ended up not doing that. Um, so there was also opportunities for
It was a policy.
Policy pieces around that of just the type of community we want to be. And so anyway, wanted to add that as well. But again, I don't know where that falls, I just wanted to bring that up.
So as council, let me ask you, the first question is, is, does this, first off, does it fit in your twenty forty vision? That would be a first question. Does it fit under one of the potential pillars? Or potentially fit under one of the pillars? Kevin Stiney has said yes.
Well, yes.
Okay. The second is, council, was it wise to the level of interest or importance to you that you would like to see something come back around a plan to move forward with that? Or a plan to reinvigorate that idea of wellness?
Thanks. Go ahead. Um, you know, this is before my council days, but I was very much involved in that program. And I thought it was an absolutely wonderful program. The way, I don't think I've ever seen a program engage so many aspects of the city like that Living Well and Capel program did. Uh, it was um, it was, it was very organic. I I I felt like, I know that there was some structure about, but people really latched on to that. And especially, I I got to shout out our seniors, they're the ones that really, really latched on to that. And uh, you know, I I think it, it definitely fits with our family community for a lifetime. Um, you know, tagline that we have that we need to keep health and wellness at the forefront of, of what we do. So, you know, Brianna, I'm, I'm not sure exactly, I, I know you're kind of just throwing out some general thoughts, but uh, I'm definitely a big supporter of, of any type of reinvigoration of that, that type of program. I, I think it's a great idea.
So we can clearly put it on a work session agenda to discuss where we want to go with it. We'll be happy to do that. Um, it just takes, remember, it just takes a suggestion from one council member to do that, so we'll be happy to do it.
We got two, so.
And you guys don't remember, I was part of that too. I don't know if you remember that. And I do remember I got very confused going, participating in it because it just got real muddled on what the.
Maybe that was when you, yeah, when you came in and there was, yeah, there was a change in the dynamic.
Yeah, and I was, that, that was very confusing on my part.
There, there was a change in dynamic about year two.
Well, I'll say that um, our weight loss theme was, we got kind of away from the community involvement. And I, I remember, um, you know, go disrespecting my, but there was a emphasis put on blue zones. And that's when I, I think it, it, it started to take this bigger approach versus being community driven and, and staying in the community. I think that's where it lost its focus and started to kind of fade away. So but when it was community focused, I thought it expanded very quickly.
Okay, so, so that, that will be a work session?
Yes.
To, to paraphrase Randy, is there any other items that we'd like to bring up? And that, by the way, is a perfect example of things that we're here to talk about. Kevin?
Um, you know, one thing I've thought about is, um, now I kind of bought this up in work session the other day about, you know, the way that, uh, our, part of our communication strategy and, and things like that, um. Uh, I will, I will say this, I want to be very delicate, um, when I say this, I, I look around town and I look at our. Communication strategy about banners around town. Uh, I just want to put this out there, I think the banners are ugly, um, I think a lot of times the weather gets a hold of them and, you know. I think for the most part, our staff does a good job of trying to respond when they get, but they're flattened in the wind, they're kind of, you know. Ugly looking, and, and what I'm talking about is. Like, I see it promoted on my city events, I know we have banner programs for small businesses and stuff like that, those are on a temporary basis, but. I would really, really like for us to look at a more elegant solution. For our city communication versus just, just banners, I, I, I would love for us to maybe look at. Some sort of, um, you know, I don't know, more. Technology-focused, um, banner program, you know, some sort of display or, or something like that. Um. Again, you know, we've had, uh, great advances in technology, but I look at like when we come down Beltline and, and I'm not saying this is a solution, but I see. Uh, Cypress Waters, for example, uh, you know, they have a really nice billboard that promotes their, the businesses that they have in the area, they, they promote special events. You know, that are going on and. I really do feel like, you know, councils in the past have been kind of a, adverse to technology and embracing that, I understand we don't want like. You know, neon vape shop shot signs all around town and, and so, sorry, uh, but. But, you know, if there's a more elegant solution to us embracing technology to get. Information out about city events and, uh, you know, uh, initiatives and things like that, I would really, really. Like to pursue that and, and look at what that looks like versus just having banners flapping in the wind.
This is, uh, actually going back to the city sign ordinance, believe it or not. And some of the historical perception is that, yes, we did not want the city to be, you know, um. Neon all over the place and look like the Las Vegas Strip. Um, there's been considerable changes in our sign ordinance. Uh, originally, you know, the, the, our city code required all the signs to be black and white. And then, you know, that has gradually evolved to allow, um. Logos to be used with color. So why, why don't we bring in, let our city staff kind of give an overview of our sign ordinance? Because that is the fundamental, that's kind of the fundamental section where what you're proposing. Uh, comes in, and then we can have a conversation about that later. I was driving over to Farmer's Ranch, uh, yesterday, Thursday morning. They have a very interesting digital signage and I, I made a note of it, so. They do it, that is an interesting sign, the way they've done it. By the way, philosophy around signs has evolved over the years from community to community. I'll go back to, this is even pre-you, Mike, with, when Jim and. Clay were here together. There, there are, i- i- if you ask a business, for example, how big a sign would you like to have, what, what do you suppose they would say?
Biggest possible.
As big as possible and I want it to be full color, logo, everything, so. You know, that's one approach, that the sign is part of their advertising and marketing. From the city approach, the sign is, the sign is a. Play, it, it's a way of finding, it's a way of finding. Tool. So, you know, we want everybody to have, we're not trying to pick winners and losers by different signs, we're not trying, you know. Um, by the way, just a- as an example, uh, years ago, my wife was a council member in Addison. And one of the proposals they had for what is now a TGI Friday, I think, right across from my declared. Thing, um, Dick Clark was going to build. A restaurant, the Dick Clark Restaurant, and he wanted a thirty-foot neon guitar. Going into the air. Because that was important for his brand. And the council said. No. If you come here, the purpose of the sign is so people know where you are, not for you to market. Which, by the way, he didn't come here after that and everybody was fine with that. But, I mean, so there's a philosophy around signage and what the purpose is. That goes into this as well and has to be updated because of technology. So that would be a great example. Any other issues? Don, here.
So I'll say, uh, this is going to be very general and broad. Um, economic development. Has shifted in this city because we don't have a lot of greenfield expansion going on. Uh, we have something, but not a whole lot. And so we shifted our efforts, shifted resources. From sort of that development to redevelopment, which I, in my opinion, has been very, very slow in coming for various reasons, market reasons and things like that. Um, but I would like to see us. Not take our eye off the ec- economic development ball, uh, ultimately. And whether it's the four hotspots, the four intersections in town, uh, and what those might look like. Or a vision. I don't know because of market conditions and the cost to redevelop here, because I think that's actually. I mentioned something last night about density. Part of our density problem is because land cost is so expensive here, it's, you gotta get denser to make it economically viable. To make it work, so there, there's some. Costs more to build here than it does in Prosper at the moment, uh, and so. I don't want us to take our eye off that ball long-term. And we have re diverted resources to other things over time, and probably rightfully so, as we were shifting, as we were maturing and shifting. But I would like to see us. Continue to focus on economic development, uh, and that probably going to mean some kind of redevelopment or. What redevelopment might look like or how. Once again, whether it's incentives or so, you know, how do we encourage certain redevelopment? And I remember the twenty thirty plan, I think, is wanting to talk about the hotspots in town, uh, and Beltline and Beltlines are one that comes to mind for me. Primarily out of the four of them.
So what is your ask?
That we can continue to put resources on economic development, I don't know that we have. Actively continue to. Chase economic development, uh, as hard as we could.
Would it, would it help to have?
Just to refocus or?
Would it help to have, uh, this could be a work session item, is a briefing on our. Current economic development plan and strategy. Um. So then you could determine if in fact you needed more.
That would be.
That would be a good starting.
Yeah, and, and that's all I'm asking for is sort of a.
Well, you're probably going to be the one giving it.
I'm not. I'm not interested in economic development.
You're on the Eco, Eco, Evo board for how long?
About, through, but still, that, that's what I'm, I guess that's what I'm.
Now, we could, we can get, um.
And that's probably more than anything, it's just a starting point of sort of where, it's been a few years since we shifted focus.
And it would be good to, to revisit that, because we haven't had that discussion in, in a number of years.
Yeah, and I, and it's not so much an action plan. Today is, I don't want to get left behind at some point, we always, for years and years, talked about communities that get left behind. And I don't want that to be us, just simply because we matured and shifted.
By the way, you go back to your twenty forty pillars, the ones around business slash, that goes into economic development, that was one of your top two pillars. So that is obviously something that this council is very. Supportive, but by the way, I was assuming you were going to point John as a committee one for that, but.
I was gonna, I was gonna second that, Don, I appreciate you bringing that back up because. Um, those four hotspots have been a topic of conversation. For a very, very long time, and so just having, um, an update on that and I'm thinking, I, I agree, Beltline and Beltline, but, um. The one that comes to mind for me that's always been a hotspot and has been on our list has been, um. My gosh, Beltline and Sandy Lake. Uh, I'm sorry, MacArthur and Beltline. And so where Pan Asian is, and we've talked about what could we do about signage and is there anything that we need to just do to kind of uplift it and? Um, and then I know that a lot has changed over the years and then we, you know. We had things that, that happened that were out of our control with twenty twenty, um, and so on, but. Let's revisit that and then figure out what our strategy is going forward and. We keep calling them the hotspots, but what are we doing about it?
Well, and to, to that point, just one other note, the silver line has changed the dynamics of some of that also, on a couple of them, so just. That's, that's changed over time.
It could be, it, it's a good opportunity to go. Any, any others? Jim?
Yeah, just real quick. I mean, I was on, it could be about two for several years. But I don't have any understanding of like. What we're currently like, like when we, when Mindy went through with the whole well-built situation. You know, just what's going on, what are we doing, how is that working now? I mean, I know how the committee works, but now that it's. Gone, you know, reverted to staff, I, I'd be curious just having a, a briefing on. You know, how is it working? When we see these economic development funds in the budget. You know, how is that getting applied? What, what do we, what do we have? And then I think we might be able to better evaluate what else we can do.
That's fair, we, when the economic, EcoDVO, uh, was rolled into other functions. We gave her some specific guidelines on how to operate and it's fair to share those back, so we can, we'll do that. Let, let me ask a question because I've heard this come up three times that I can remember since last night and today. And I want to throw it out and ask council. Is it just thrown out just because it's there or is it something we need to be considering? Um, three times people have talked about, that I can remember, density. And the potential need for change in density. Based upon economic conditions. And, and, and so, okay, so Donna said it three times. Is that something council that deserves conversation? Uh, or is it just Donna mentioning it three times?
I don't think it deserves, uh, the special, that subject has already been decided. John?
Thank you, um, I actually tend to agree with Don about at, at least looking into it, um. Obviously, we don't have much more room to develop, but. If we are going to continue to grow, I think there, the alternative, we have to kind of at least look at it, I'm not saying we have to go that route, but at least, uh, look at it and discuss about it. So that's, um, something that I think. Um, it should consider. Then as far as what. Kevin has said about the signage, um, I think it is a good oppor- well, I know jumping from that to that, but. Um, as far as that, I think it, it is a good opportunity because I think if we do change. From, I don't know, from banners to digital, it does give a flexibility of doing more advertising, especially during the. Uh, what is it, the highly used traffic of Beltline, um, uh, gun tabs. Uh, to be able to notify people, use that. Use that to our advantage of a lot of people passing by to whatever that, you know, if you want to draw the, the crowds to that, um, to the certain things, right? So those two things, I think, I agree with you and I, I, I agree with you that we should consider. Or at least begin to alternatives.
So I'm going to speak up on the density, I'm going to side with Mark. That was a highly contested item when it came before the council. Um, it was very clear where our population stood, however, that was eight, nine years ago? Ten? Okay, ten, and I'm not, I, I think it's worthy of a discussion. But it's, it. I don't think, I'm not seeing much of an initiative from our population to endorse it. So, you know, we can certainly have. By the way, compared to other cities, you are dense. Believe it or not, compared, right?
You're talking about in terms of population per square foot.
Right, yeah, compared to other cities around, there are some cities around that would look at you and go, man, we never want to be as dense as Capel. Uh, that's because we want half acre, half acre minimum lots. Don first.
So I don't, when I talk about density, when I bring that up, I want to, I don't think that they're, it's mutually exclusive. Uh, because there's another one of those under the pillars, under the vision, one of them says, uh. Come up with ideas to protect single-family resident neighborhoods or something like that, and. I actually think that's very, very important also, because that is part of the character of this community, but I do think there are. Certain areas of town that we can explore. Um, density or as redevelopment project come up, all I know is that it costs fifty dollars a square foot in Prosper for land and a hundred dollars a square foot here. There's just economic variables there that have to be considered, so I don't think there, I don't think it's either or. I think you can come up with some way to evaluate, protect the character of our neighborhoods, because the fact is, my neighborhood. Is not as dense as some of the neighborhoods in town, so we have different densities. Uh, already in town, just from, I mean, Carter Estates, I don't have a lot like Carter Estates does, so. There are, there are differences in different areas of town, so I just, I guess, I want to just clarify that I'm not. Trying to build out. Capel into this dense area, but I think we can find pockets or areas of town that maybe it makes sense, we at least ought to be curious about it.
Jim?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it depends on, you know, the vernacular we're actually using, I mean, I would not be excited about hu- high-density development. You know, five-story apartment complex. Uh, and I don't think there's any real passion for that in our community from anyone I've talked to. Um, and in the past, we've had a lot of pushback. Even from people in neighborhoods. To someone building a two-story structure that, as they put it, will look into my backyard, so. Um, you know, even doing vertical, uh, has seen some opposition, but. Um, but I'm not opposed to any discussion or consideration, I mean, I, I don't think we, we ever. Uh, miss the mark by looking at an issue or considering an issue, um. You know, and I, and I think we have to be careful about. When we're talking about density or we ask staff to come to us with, you know. Some proposal on density that we actually specify what exactly we're talking about. Are we talking about high-density housing? Are we talking about loft apartments? Uh, you know, that sort of thing, because a lot of departments were part of the vision twenty thirty, I believe. Um, or at least within the context of the redevelopment of, uh, some of the. Uh, retail and the, the one proposal over there for Braywood where they were going to put in loft apartments. And that got hauled down by all the neighbors about people looking down in their backyard, so. Um, I, I would just want to be careful that. I don't mind having a discussion or any discussion for that matter. But I, I think we need to be careful about, a little more technical about how we define density.
You, you do have a vehicle to manage that and just be based on what comes to you through the Ford. Because future-oriented, future-oriented approach to residential housing. They could bring, I mean, that could be the vehicle to bring that to you rather than you just bringing it. Than you being proactive on. Just an optional. Go down.
I, also want to clarify, when I mentioned that last night, I was not actually saying we need to discuss that. I think I was just saying we need to be open to, this could be coming in the future, so just to clarify. I don't think it's a burning issue for this year's council to discuss, I guess.
Okay, so.
I'm not asking you for it, but I'm not asking this.
But, but.
I was making, I was making a philosophical point last night. I think we are going to have to be open to it at some point, that was my initial.
Okay, so I, I took your, your.
Okay.
Your request right now to have a work session discussion on density. That was what I just heard you ask for.
Okay, well, that is not what I asked for, so you can.
So you can scratch that one off, but.
It's on.
I was making a point, I think we need to be.
And, 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 and the Ford could bring that back to you, that could be the vehicle to manage that.
And I, I think that, quite honestly. Subjectively, I think that is part of what we saw the forest doing, and that was, you know, yeah, because that is. Definitely in the future. Right?
Any other issues?
Anything else you wanted to say?
I'm not talking to anyone.
Any others?
EcoDVO, I think.
All right, hearing none, you have now gone through your agenda, congratulations, you're out of here, we're out of here, just about. What I thought we would be, based on today, before I turn it back to the mayor, let me ask you, um. Overall. Was last night and today, were they, were they used to?
Sure, I'm sure it's good.
Anything that you would like to see done differently around these in the future?
I mean, even the dinner was one of them.
Oh, we do need to thank Ashley for. And by the way, there are some cookies.
And by the way, there are some cookies left. So when, when.
And I would encourage you to take them.
So when Randy asked about, you know, was this effective? The one thing that that we struggle with is the number of items to put on the agenda, you know, uh. This felt pretty comfortable. Um, the original list that Mike and I had come up with was much, much longer and we trimmed it. Which I think was probably smart. We'd have been here till six o'clock tonight if we'd have stayed with the original one. So, you know, let us know, it, let us know if this feels right. I I think this was a very.
Comfortable.
Comfortable time. Kevin?
I just want to make an observation as, but my, you know, I I think it's my third, uh, you know, agenda being accountable is, I really appreciate. Um, the first one, I felt like. Uh, people didn't volunteer, you know, future city council considerations. And subsequent years, I feel like people are opening up a little bit more. Uh, and so I just want to say thank you to to all of you guys. Because knowing what is important to you guys helps me. Uh, I think, and guidance. So I just want to appreciate you guys being open and communicating more than what I've seen in the past, like when I first got on council. So. That helps me be a better council member. So thank you for sharing.
Randy, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I was just asking, I was gonna ask Kevin if we all should get together and hug it out at this point, but.
Unfortunately, I was thinking the same thing, so.
No, thank you all again for the opportunity. It's always a pleasure to work with you and see you again soon with the mayor.
Well, thank you very much and thanks to the staff for being here. There being no further business uh before this council, we're adjourned at eleven thirty.